Which is by the United States of America and to the Republic of Sanz on nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and justice for all.
We have any citizen's statements or petitions? I don't believe we have any correspondence. So let's move right on to the tax classification hearing. If the members of the, our assessors, esteemed assessors would come up.
Ah, the esteemed assessors. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're so kind.
Mendon Select Board will hold a public hearing on property tax classification Wednesday, November three at six thirty P M. Now, there will be several policy decision alternatives discussed by those present before the select board determine the guidelines to be established for allocating percentage of the tax burden for the residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property. Interested taxpayers may have present written testimony by four o'clock on November fifth of this year to the selectman's office, or by email oral testimony may be given at the hearing, but will be limited to three minutes per taxpayer. So at this point, I would give the floor to the assessors so that you walk us through this.
We also find out if any of the, any, any information was received from anybody.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, did any, anybody send anything to the board about comments or anything?
I don't believe so. Let's, I need a motion to open the hearing.
You would open the F twenty four property tax classification hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
I am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the, the annual tax classification hearing. Brendan, are you doing the slides?
Yes.
You could go ahead. Okay, just so you know, for the folks at home, the hearing is required by state law to be held once a year by the select board. And basically, there are four votes that need to be taken, whether to have a single or dual tax rate, and whether to offer open space residential or small business exemptions, which we'll explain. And review the property assessments, projected tax rate, and discuss any other financial information. Um, just so you know, the dates we're dealing with. Fiscal year twenty four runs from July first of twenty three to June thirtieth of twenty four. Uh, when people get an assessment, it's for the status of their property as of January first of twenty three. Uh, unless they had new growth, that is additions, things like that, major changes in the property, in which case we looked at it up until June thirtieth, which the law allows us to do. Uh, for this year, we examined real estate sales in calendar year twenty twenty two. Uh, we also, in the case where we couldn't meet the D O A standards, they require a minimum amount or percentage of properties in every category. Um, we may have gone back to twenty one as well. Um, and in terms of value in commercial industrial property, we're looking at their info for calendar year twenty two as well. Um, the laws, the laws allow you guys to shift a share of the residential property tax burden to what we, in assessors called C I P, but it's the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes of property. And the shift can be between one to fifty percent. Uh, historically, you haven't done this, but that doesn't mean you can't. Um, this year, the, the total valuation of the town over last year increased by one hundred thirty eight million three hundred sixty two thousand five fifty to a new total of one billion four sixty eight, four ninety three, five twenty. Um, the residential is almost ninety percent of that. Uh, commercial is five point four percent, industrial is about three tenths of a percent. And, uh, personal property is about four and a half percent. That's the makeup of that figure. Uh, I know that's hard to read, but that's just an explanation of what constitutes real and personal and commercial property. I think people understand real property, if you own a home, it's your home and land. If you own a commercial industrial building, it's the building and the land. And personal property tends to affect businesses more, and that is the equipment uh, with certain limitations, the equipment they use to run the business. Uh, the average values, residential values increased an average of, uh, ten percent over last year, and that's the median value. And just to define median, medians means fifty percent of the properties are above that level and fifty percent are below. And commercial values increased three percent. Uh, the average value for single family home this fiscal year is now six hundred ten thousand dollars. In a slide or two, we'll get back to where it was. Uh, and then again, is approximately ten percent higher than the last fiscal year. Just in general, for people who don't know, the houses are valued based on analyzing real estate markets within the town and what actual sales were. And you look at the sales properties and develop a model of where it went, and you apply that to the, the whole universe of things.
Yep.
Okay, uh, the way the property tax is calculated is basically the people going to town meeting vote to spend the money uh, at the annual and the fall town meeting on the operating budget, capital items, whatever. Uh, that gives you the total amount of money you need to, uh, use to run the town. You subtract the state aid, which us insiders call the cherry sheet, because way back when it was on bright red paper in the days of paper. Um, and local receipts like building permit fees, liquor license fees, auto excise taxes. And the balances, what is commonly known as the tax levy or the amount you raise through property taxes. So this year, the total levy is, uh, twenty million, one sixty eight, four sixty six. That includes the, the tax levy for running the town and then the cost of paying off the debt exclusions. Uh, this year's cost, not the cost of paying them off. And that came to twenty million, one sixty eight, four sixty six. And under Prop two and a half, you have a total levy ceiling that you, uh, uh, or levy limit you can't exclude. And this year, uh, you are sixty five thousand, three sixty two, fifty one under it. Which basically, the easiest way to explain that is money you could have taxed up to, but the town chose not to. Uh, it also means in a case of emergency, you can always go back during the year, reopen a town meeting and reapply things. Usually you don't, but it's there. Uh, just so people know the debt exclusion impact. Um, all five of the debt exclusions that we're paying for amounted to seventy five cents per thousand dollar valuation on the tax rate. And I think the amounts are up there. For those who can't see it, the, uh, Fino Land purchase and the fire station is eighteen cents. The Clough renovation, uh, was twenty cents. The Misco Hill, what they called the green repair at the time was to, uh, I think fix the boilers and roof and things like that is four cents. The purchase of the old Saint Mike's Church and renovating it to libraries thirteen cents, and the police station is, is twenty cents.
That's per thousand.
Per thousand valuation, yes. Um, to get to a, a tax rate, you basically divide that levy by the total valuation of the town. In this case, you divide that, uh, that twenty million, one sixty eight, four sixty six by the one point five roughly billion. And that comes out to a tax rate of thirteen sixty nine at first glance. If you, if you mind, Brendan. But if you remember, this year, um, you approve, uh, well, uh, the town meeting approved, the bill was passed, and you guys picked, uh, one hundred and fifty percent for the senior exemption. The net effect on that senior exemption, which is spread across all residential property, was to add two cents to that thirteen sixty nine for residences. Um, and bring them up to thirteen seventy one. Um, with the, if the net effect of that exemption is the average house at six hundred and ten thousand a year would pay twelve dollars and fifty cents more per year on their taxes, uh, which means even a house at a million dollars is somewhere around, you know, twenty, twenty five dollars, which is what we projected way back when. So the net effect, I believe we had thirty three seniors who are getting that, the net effect. Uh, for instance, on my house, it's just about twelve dollars fifty cents for a year. Next one. Um, so right away, that does create a split tax rate um, of twelve sixty nine and, I'm sorry, thirteen sixty nine. Um, I'm sorry, what did I say? Thirteen seventy one for residents and thirteen sixty nine for commercial industrial property. Now, if you could go back. Um, because you consider shifts, we have three examples. The first is a one percent shift to the commercial industrial personal property would wipe that twelve fifty out for the residences. Um, and bring them back to the thirteen sixty nine rate. But the commercial industrial rate would rise to thirteen eighty three for thousand valuation. And that would give the average commercial property in town, uh, eighty seven dollars and ninety six cent increase on their tax bills. If you go to the next one, we've just carried that forward, ten percent shift would drop the residential rate to thirteen fifty five or a thirteen fifty five savings. Um, and the commercial industrial would go to fifteen oh six or about eight hundred and sixty one dollars more on their bill. And if you went to the full hundred fifty percent, which is the next slide, um, the residential rate would drop to twelve ninety three or a savings of forty seven seventy three on that average valued home, and the commercial industrial would rise to fifteen oh six or a about a forty four thousand two hundred ninety eight dollar increase to each commercial property. So it gives you a good idea of, of where the shifts would go. Um, in all those examples, the home we're talking about was that average six ten, and we know people are above it and people are below it. And it included in those savings, it included the C P A surcharge being added in, just so we're talking apples to apples. Brendan, if you wouldn't mind. Um, as I said, the sales prices in that calendar year grow new values. People understand we're always looking behind. Um, from the point where we are now, it's about eighteen months to two years behind where the sales were. So we know that in this calendar year, uh, the prices are remaining steady because of low inventory, but the number of sales is dropping. It's conceivable that this time next year, you might see things slow down or not increase uh, that much or at all. We can't predict where that's going, but people need to understand that we're at this point in time, we're dealing with sales from January one to December thirty first of calendar twenty two. And a lot's happened to the markets since. Um, last year, the average house was, uh, five hundred thousand. Uh, and the total tax bill for that um, with C P A was seventy four, seventy five, twenty. This year, it's increasing by an average two hundred fifty dollars to, uh, first of all, it's now five fifty. Uh, when you ratchet it up by that ten percent, and the bill would be seventy seven hundred plus change. At a six sixty assessment, the bill is now ninety two, seventy eight, ninety three. And that's a, just about a three hundred dollar increase from, from last year. Um, so those are some examples of the effect of the thirteen seventy one rate of properties. Brendan, if you could. Um, that's sort of where we stop on that one, then we'll go into the other exemptions. But the option for residential exemption means you could grant people uh, up to thirty five percent of the assessed value uh, in that residence exemption. However, um, it's usually only adopted by cities, uh, that have summer homes where they want to give it to the year round people, and that's the Cape, uh, Martha's Vine, New York Tucket, or places with an awful lot of rental apartments like Boston, Cambridge, Brooklyn, and Somerville. There's only eighteen communities in the state to do this, and Mendon historically has not done it. Um, the next exemption is the open space exemption. And candidly, since we don't classify any property as open space, we don't give the exemption historically this. And the last one, um, is the small commercial exemption, which at first blush, looks like you're giving the small businesses in town a break, but there's some caveats there. Uh, one is they have to have annual employment of less than ten employees. The property has to be valued at less than a million dollars. And all tenants in the building, all commercial tenants in a commercial building, had to meet this criteria. And the exemption goes to the owner of the building, not the owner of the business, and most of these people are leasing. So you need to look at it. Um, it also shifts that burden of the people who get it to all the other commercial industrial property owners. And I would just say, in a, in a town like Mendon that has quite a bit of chapter land, landed farmland protection, they're also considered commercial property by the D O R, and so it would increase their taxes as well. Uh, only fifteen communities have adopted this, and historically Mendon hasn't. So that's really where we are. We're, we're open to questions about what's going on, and then at the end of that, you, you're required to look at a cou- a couple of votes, which I know we have samples before you, so. Um, but basically, do any of you have any questions?
I, I do have a question just about the, the levy limit. Can you just explain to everybody the levy limit again? And, uh, when the option was for us to make that vote? And it's not something we do, it's something that they would, we would have done at town meeting.
Correct. Okay, the levy limit came out of Prop two and a half. Prop two and a half for those, uh, who are younger than sixty and couldn't have voted for it. Prop two and a half was a ballot initiative that was passed by the voters of Massachusetts in November of nineteen eighty. And it took effect at fiscal year eighty two, which began on July one eighty one. And that's the one that says the overall amount of taxes a town can raise, not each person's house, but the overall amount of taxes that a town can raise each year can only go up by two and a half percent a year. On top of that, they let you factor in new growth and any overrides to, that sets your cap. So what falls out of that, that's how much you'd increase. They look at all the value in the town and they look at historical things. And when you figure out, um, the D O R has an online calculator that you enter all the data into every year, and it basically says your levy ceiling or your top amount you can raise is this based on that. You can't raise over that. In this case, this year, through votes at the town meeting, uh, Mr. Barley is quite correct. There is no formal vote to say, we'll make it sixty five thousand under. The town threw votes at the two town meetings. I apologize for that.
All right, we approve your ringing.
I thought I turned that off. I do apologize. Um, basically appropriated sixty five and change less than that ceiling. And again, what I said is the town could have gone and spent, appropriated by, by taxes another sixty five thousand, but chose not to. It's sometimes not a conscious decision. And by the time you go through all the complex factors of, uh, producing estimates of what you think the fees are for a year when it's three months into the year, and you look at what new growth you got last year that carries into this year. Um, oftentimes, you think you have a totally balanced budget, and when the D O R's computers edit it up, most towns are usually somewhere, you know, unless you made a conscious decision to deliberately tax a couple of hundred thousand below that, most towns usually wind up somewhere between, I'd say, twenty thousand and a hundred thousand, not taxing up to, just by calculating.
Last year, it was at eighty six dollars.
Yeah.
Right, it was very tax.
Yeah, and, and Holliston this year, we were five twelve.
But I, I know in, in, I, I guess the point I'm trying to get at is you don't know what that number is by town, by the annual town meeting, kind of.
No, nor do you know it by the October town meeting, because what happens is, once you get past that fall town meeting, if you've appropriated money, we have to wait till that town meeting's over to calculate everything. And at that, that time, um, for instance, the treasurer, collector, and accountant are inputting lots and lots of numbers and their estimates, and then you look at assessors overlay, which could do things. And the D O R basically calculates for you. And if you're over it, then you can't set a tax rate, then you have to look at, uh, do I have free cash I could tuck into there? Do I lower my overlay? And it's a balancing act every year.
But when it comes to the two and a half calculation for next year.
You can predict that right after this rate is set.
But, but my point is that this, that this, in this case, sixty five thousand, three sixty two.
Right.
Um, we're two and a half, we're
That's excess.
Excess levy, but we're, we can go to two and a half percent with that number. In other words, we're not losing that because we did it the year before.
So, so it's the, it's, it's the current levy plus that sixty five.
Right.
The two and a half added to that.
Right.
Then whatever new growth occurs from July one. Well, actually, yeah.
Yeah, any new growth.
From July one of, of this year through June thirtieth, the next year sits on top of that. And that's usually when you look at your, your, um, the calculations online in the D O R, because you could plug in the new growth, and then it says to you, here's where you're going.
Oh, and I, I guess what I'm getting at is the fact that we didn't go to that levy limit doesn't limit us.
You don't lose it.
You don't lose it. That's bottom line. You don't.
Right, that's my, that's your question.
Yeah, that's my.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Right.
I misunderstood.
No, no, no.
You, you don't lose it, but it's a balancing act getting there every year. And like I said, most towns, I mean, we wound up in Holliston, we're on the assessment, we wound up with five hundred and twelve dollars of excess levy.
In one other word, you, you mentioned assessors overlay. Why don't you just explain that?
Okay, the assessors overlay is an account that must be held, and it funds two things. You must have enough in it every year to cover uncollected pro- uncollected property taxes. Um, and that's the counterbalance in the, in the books. You have a debt here, you have to have it covered there. And it is where all the abatements and exemptions are paid out of, with the exception of that new senior exemption. And so if you give out, and not auto excise tax, uh, uh, exemptions. So the senior exemptions, the veterans exemptions, all of those get paid out of there, so the money is made up in the budget. So if I'm a veteran and I'm entitled to a four hundred dollar exemption, that four hundred dollars still goes into the operating budget, it comes out of the overlay.
It's built into, so the, that overlay number is built into the budget as part of the balance.
That's right, and it is part of the two and a half ceiling that you take money out every year to put it in there and cover. And for instance, we also have enough in hours, uh, if you remember the discussion on the senior property tax workup program, that's also in there to cover that money. And it.
And if I may, yes, the, the origin of that is from the assessors.
Right.
The assessors are the ones that come up with that number, and, uh, and it's put in, and it, it can't be changed.
And, and just, just so we're, we're clear, you don't just kind of
willy nilly.
Pull the number out of the air, right?
No, a- actually, the D O R also helps you, because when you're filling out your tax forms to get the rate certified, you must enter the last five years' actual expenditures on abatements and exemptions.
That's how it's calculated.
Well, you put them in, and then they say, at a minimum, you must have the five year average in there.
So it's a five year average plus whatever abatements.
Right.
Plus uncollected taxes, right?
Plus any.
And it's an average of ta- uncollected taxes over the last five years, or?
No, what your liability is now, in any cases that you might have in front of the F T B or other kinds of.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was going to say, there's one more thing that goes in there. If you have a, a case where people um, saw an abatement and didn't get it, the next place you go to is the state's bill of tax board. You must also budget your total exposure, even if you think you've got a lockout winning the case. You must have enough money there to pay that full exposure.
But the, but the point is that the D O R go, gives you that five year average, then you know what the, what your abatements are, and you know what your uncollected taxes are.
Yes.
And that's where the number comes from.
Yes.
And that's built.
Yeah, and then you have to look at what do you think that you're going to have
This year.
in abatements, uh, this coming year.
Yeah.
Which we have no clue.
Well, but, but you, you have an idea of it because people apply for it, right?
Well, this.
At this point in time, we have.
In fiscal twenty three, no.
Right, but when we build, but when we build, by the time we but the number that, when you come up with the number, it's, it's, you have some of that information. Or do you do it, do you do it based on? So where do you, so where do you come up with that number from, based on?
Well, well, yeah, you look at, well, you look at the last five years worth, and you, you make an educated guess that it could be this number.
But then, at the same time, you're also looking at how well do you feel that you, uh, that your assessed values are correct?
For instance, in fiscal twenty three, there were zero abatement requests.
In this town.
In this town.
Right, which was, which was a great thing.
Absolutely. I, I go back to what the decision we made earlier.
Yes.
So we had a maximum amount you're going to add to the overlay for the
Yes.
new program. You're gonna, you know, so to your point, you may not know who's going to take advantage of the abatement.
No, but we know.
Like you're gonna, you, we put a max there, so you're gonna add that to, on top of your overlay.
Right, so.
Okay.
But, but excuse me, I'm sorry. Uh, I just want to make sure, because I don't want to misspeak here. So what is the part that you, you're speaking to on, on?
The senior workup program.
The senior workup program?
Yeah, we, we, I think we increased the.
You did.
We did, yeah.
And subsequently, the state law increased the maximum amount.
So that increased, that added number. So what, what is the?
You would increase the overlay by the max we've.
So for fiscal twenty five, which you're going to be start budgeting, at a minimum, you start off with that twenty grand, just for that program. Then you look at the last bunch of years' average on exemptions of that. And it is sometimes very hard to do. Um, if the state legislature creates a new exemption, if they modify it, um, if people are very unhappy in a year that the taxes go up dramatically, you may see a lot more abatement requests.
But, okay, so the so do we truly have a ceiling on the amount of money that can be exercised through that abatement that we agree, that we talked about? Or could it, could it exceed what we talked about in a previous meeting?
Well, we put a percentage on it, not a dollar.
Well, the senior program can't go beyond that, that amount of money. That's locked.
You put a percentage on what?
But we, we increase it to one hundred and fifty percent. That was the decision.
No, that's. But the senior workup program is, can't go higher than twenty.
And you will be as part of the.
Well, it's another account of the budget for us.
Now, we're talking for the overlay.
Yeah, right, now we're talking about here.
That's it.
Yes.
But that's his question, okay.
Yeah, so that workoff program automatically for fiscal twenty five, that twenty, that twenty, uh, for the senior workup program is, is the base. And then we get on our estimates for everything else. You, you get to be pretty good at it after a number of years, but you're also taking it. It is no different.
Based on, but it's based on
Historical trends.
Historical numbers.
Which it, but it is the same as you're making an estimate almost a year in advance, which is no different than when you look at estimated receipts. Um, in building the budget for ca- for fiscal twenty five, you're saying, well, we got this much in auto excise the last couple of years. You know, do you leave that same? Do you put it up a little? Do you go down a little? It's part of that estimation process.
Yeah, so, so for example, if I, if I may just talk about the, uh, uh, excise tax. Really cool thing to do, touch base with the local, um, car dealers. How are they doing? That's an obvious. If they're not selling cars, we're not going to get the added value for new car transfer in our excise. Anybody can guess in an up economy. It's the down economy that makes heroes as to trying to get those numbers earmarked.
But, but I guess just to, to, to round this, the vein of this question out, when we build a budget that we're going to vote on in May, you've given us that number that.
We give you a number for the overlay.
Into the budget.
Yeah.
Yes, right, yes.
When is that, that you come up with that number?
Uh, actually, it's, it's really, it's really not done that way. It's, it's, it's it's, it's
Jean usually.
Done in the, uh, on the, on the recap.
Yeah, but Jean usually gives you the numbers somewhere in late December, early January. And Cass here, she sends a memo out.
Is that we're going to vote in May.
Yes.
But you're going to give it to us in January.
Yeah, six months, seven months.
So when you're gonna build that, we're gonna build that.
When you're putting the budget together, you'll have that number. I know historically, Jean sends it out in either mid to December. But Joe, do you know one, because you're.
Joe, do you mind? Why don't you, come on us.
It's part of our revenue projection.
Yeah.
So it'll be, it'll be part of that when we get that together. That's all.
Yeah, I mean, you, you always have it when you come up with, theoretically, we have this much to spend, and then you start putting things in and, and model the budget. So it's timely enough.
So we have, uh, we have some. I guess at this point, we can close the hearing.
Well, just make sure there's nobody, well.
If anybody has any, that's my point.
Question. So the, on the topic of the dual tax rate, so you give several. Several options of, you know, one percent to a hundred and fifty percent. Does it have to be a whole percent? I mean, is there like?
It's it's easier to calculate.
Okay, all right. I'm just wondering about like, you know. Hypothetically splitting the difference, because you know, we're, as you said, we're effectively getting a dual tax rate now because of the means tested.
And and.
Tax exemption, and I'm just wondering if we can like shave it down so that it's closer to the same rate.
The the problem is anytime you shift that rate, the commercial industrial automatically gets a higher burden. The higher you shift that rate, the more the burden goes to them.
Right.
So it gets just the one percent that we talked about. Brings the twelve fifty extra, whatever it is in the residential, back down to nothing, but you saw the. It just goes up by ninety dollars.
That's why I was wondering about like if it were like half a percent, for example, I mean. Just hypothetically, I don't know if that complicates things excessively, but then it would be just distributing the burden a little bit. To the businesses without giving, I mean, it seems like the increase of even. Uh, uh, the one percent shift is kind of hefty for the businesses.
Yeah, traditionally, we we have it because. The idea is we're trying to get.
Right, we want to attract. Says we don't.
Dual tax rate has the exact opposite effect.
Right. But this.
Right.
We're effectively having a dual tax rate.
Well.
The other direction.
But I would also point out that the voters at the twenty-two town meeting. When they passed the article to send the legislation to the state, we're told that.
Right.
And we're given projections, and when you guys set the hundred fifty, you were given projections.
Right.
So it's not a surprise to people.
No, no.
And and again, part of the law is, this is the first year we're doing it. After two more years, it has to go back to town meeting for vote to reauthorize it for another three years. So the people do have a say, and if if they don't like it after three years, they could vote it away. But twelve, you know, my own personal feeling is, again, to help thirty-three seniors possibly stay in their house or be able to afford to. I don't mind paying twelve dollars and fifty cents a year more.
Agreed.
That's my own personal feel. But i- i- it. It's extremely, you you really can't balance it, so the increase is the same.
Right. You could sort of, yeah, stab one direction, stab the other, but.
Yeah, but when when you shift, ag- again, residential goes down, but commercial it goes up, and to try to balance it, it's very hard to get a stasis point. Uh, where the the it is the same, because one is always going up and one is always going down. And and the idea, by the way, that the one percent wiped out to twelve fifty was not planned. I mean. Jean's always giving you the one percent and ten percent, fifty percent examples every year.
Well, we did the one percent back up my ear too, I said, so we we could actually. Maintain.
The residential.
The residential rate, still give the senior the. So I mean.
You could do it on the on the backs, but again, it would have to be doing it on the backs of the.
Of the businessman, of the businesses.
Well. Commercial going on the back of somebody, right?
Right. Well, yeah, but what.
How it's, right.
But what was shown to voters is it's going on the backs of the residential.
Right. Any other questions, any of the board members? I move to close this public hearing.
I just want to see, are there any other?
Yeah.
Questions online or or from the from the audience? Certainly.
Apologies if this isn't the right form to ask this question, and due to this, I don't understand a lot of what's going on. Uh, but I'd like to understand how this, like, how we decide what the strategy is and. Uh, where you set that point between uh the residential tax rate versus the commercial tax rate.
Well, that's what we're we're doing right now, and actually, we've we've traditionally. In in the history of this town has never have never had a dual tax rate, simply because. We've always tried, number one, we try to get businesses to come into town. And number two, compared to other towns around us, we don't have as much to offer, simply we don't have water and sewer. We don't have the services that other other communities do, so it it's 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 been counter. Well, I've always felt it was counterproductive to set up a dual tax rate.
Yes, I could, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
I know three businesses on on Cape Road Route one forty where I live, where when they re- when they relocated here from Milford. I talked to all of them, they all said the reason they came here is because we have a single tax rate. And Milford's dual tax rate was pricing that a business. So in this case, it attracted business here. Browser construction.
Well, the 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 points.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and if I may, also, at the same time, we're talking about one percent. The Hokedale and Milford, they were a hundred and seventy-five.
Right.
So they they they're at the at the outer limits of the spectrum. And and yes, I concur with with my colleague here on why people want to move here. It's because of the lower. Or equal rates. I'll just go with the lower rates.
In in fact, I know for a fact, I've talked with him when he built the dealerships. Mr. Min built his three dealerships here with the savings. Of having one tax rate. He saved enough over twenty years to pay for those three brand-new buildings. That's why he came here.
There you go. But I mean, we we do this every year, so I think we re- we look at it. If we ever re- got the level of commercial. Into Mendenham, we felt we're saturated, perhaps would, you know, think about it, but right now, I think the general feeling is, the chair had said is. As a means of attracting more commercial in. Um, may not be the right time to do it, but I think we've had this conversation every year.
Yeah.
You know, that we've done this. And it's important to 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 know something that's still going on right now. It's a study that the that the state provided us with money. To look at adding water and sewer. And uh, Mr. Hodge, to 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 your point. Perhaps if we could add Route sixteen and and Route one forty, um those commercial corridors, if we had water and sewer. For commercial property would make it worth more, make it more attractive. Um, then perhaps we could consider it, and we certainly are considering it now, but traditionally, we we haven't done that. I don't know if that answers your question or not, or.
Yeah, I I think I have better understanding of of why I wouldn't necessarily advocate one one system together. I I think just one quick. In the context of businesses the likes of which uh we've seen get approved on Cape Road or. You know, very large warehouse style building. With seeing those types of businesses come to the town, change how we might approach. You know, this this question of the tax rate balance.
It 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 could. It it all it all kinds of goes into the mix. Sure, I mean, the other thing I think to consider is if you think about ta- tax rates, is think about the questions about zoning as they come before the town. Because I think about the 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 or tap orchard over in sixteen, we've tried to rezone that for, you know, uh. Different ways.
Exuse.
Mixed use, which we bring in. So it's a very broad question. There's a lot of um. Tangential questions come before the town and they and they're they're connected. So if you think about, if it were me, from my perspective, if we reach a point of saturation where we actually have, to answer your last question. That type of business coming to town might make me rethink this. But we can't get enough of that into town, nor not that I want it on sixteen, but we've got to think about our zoning, just part of the master plan recommendations. And think long and hard about these things when they come to the floor, because that's what's gonna be the first step to trying to. Bring more business to town that might allow us to rethink, you know, a dual tax rate. So it's also connected.
And there's there's also one factor tied into that that can make. You have to look at the overall environment for commercial industrial building. And and right now, it's no secret that, you know, like you can't give away office space. Uh, you know, Mayor Warren Boston is offering twenty-five percent bonuses. Uh, if you uh tax breaks, if you convert a downtown office building to residential. But that's even harder to do, because you have to replum and reelect electrify the whole thing. Um, and the only thing being built, the housing market is where it is due to the high interest rates. And the only thing built being built industrial right now uh across the entire U S is large warehouses. Small ones they can't give away right now.
Fuck.
But.
There is a caveat on that.
Yes.
I think that have reached saturation uh with the uh. Interest rates where they are, uh even though, for example, that, for example, Douglas has almost four million square foot. Of of modern uh industrial distribution center space on the on the planning, on the plans. To be built uh in the area of Gilboa Street and where Pine Sand is. I don't know, it's it's softening enough where we're not sure if they're gonna put a shovel in the ground.
Well, because when they started those plans, the interest rates were, you know, close to zero. But but you know, we we can, we digress, you're you're right, but.
I just have one, one quick comment that I think will be easy to kind of simplify this for everybody. If you can, please um forgive me if I misspeak. Jump in, tell me I'm wrong.
Sure, no problem.
Both of you, you have to do that. So if we think about it like this, the percentage of residential real estate and, uh sorry, the percentage of the levy that is residential in nature. Is eighty-nine percent, right?
Right.
And so our our commercial tax base really only represents five percent of our levy, and that's really the key. So until the businesses come in, we, the the shifted percentage for the the tax rate. Hurts businesses more than it helps residents.
Right.
If that makes sense, that's the simplest way to put it.
If I could add, I mean, the difference was both twelve dollars and fifty cents for the average house. The average business goes up ninety dollars.
Yeah.
There's there's. That perfectly says what the tax stuff said. Yeah.
All right, so we have a we have a motion to close the. Uh, yeah, I move to close the F Y twenty-three property tax uh classification here.
Second floor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ah, sorry. Yeah, we have a, we have a mistype on here.
We opened the twenty-four, so we have to close the twenty-four.
We have to close. Right, so we have, we have a. Various options to either. Adopt a a dual tax rate or a single tax rate.
Be boat after the second.
Right. So the motion will be made in second to um adopt either a dual tax rate. Or. Oh, we get this broken out as one of these that's. It's just a single rate, right? So if being a effective dual rate is not the same thing as an actual dual rate.
It remains theoretically a single rate, because that exemption sits outside of it. It becomes. A dual rate with that exemption, but it is actually voting for a single rate for everything.
Right.
Or, as we say, a factor one.
So it's a second motion, right?
Right.
That's that's my point.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, I I don't believe we voted to to close.
Sorry, all those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
And uh then I would move that the town of Mendenham adopt a residential factor one point oh. Therefore, uh thereby establishing a residential rate of thirteen seventy-one and a commercial industrial. Um, pers- uh personal property rate of thirteen sixty-nine for fiscal year two thousand twenty. Second. Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, you do need to vote on whether or not to adopt those two.
Right, so. So the, as you can, we have uh motions for not to adopt the residential exemption. Um, not to adopt open space or not and not to adopt the small commercial exemption for F Y twenty-four. So so moved, so moved.
Second, second, second.
All the motions have been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
All right, thank you all very much. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for the presentation.
This this was the thirteen sixty-nine?
Yes.
Good. That's a estimated, as close as we could get to right now, D O R has to do all the final.
Right.
Yeah. Subject to.
Yeah, the ca- the caveat is.
We've done our piece.
You've done all your stuff, you did it well.
Yeah, I know it sounds technical, but nobody ever really approves a tax rate, because it's mathematical.
That's.
The D O R certifies. The rate at this number based on your books tonight.
Numbers facts.
That, yes.
That's right. Kevin, great slides, thank you.
Appreciate it. Probably to juice it up this year.
I know.
Thank you, folks.
We have the the Board of Health members like to come up and speak to us. Chairman, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. So you want to discuss municipal trash collection and disposal and revolving account for trash collection?
Correct. Uh, does everybody have the handout? All right, very good. Jack, I'll let you do your thing and then I'll.
All right, for today's topic, I wanted to give you some uh financial records for our last fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Uh, on the first page, you're gonna see invoices from Wind Waste, which is our trash uh. Collection and disposal. Uh, for a fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget, our trash collection budget was three hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Trash disposal was one hundred and thirty thousand, and for trash administration, which is the uh printing of the bills and mailing out the invoices to the subscribers. It's four thousand. Uh, total fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget, four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. For fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, all invoices calculated total four hundred and sixty-five thousand. One hundred and sixty-five uh dollars and fifty-four cents, with leaving a balance of six thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty cents. Uh, using these calculations with uh trash sticker revenue. Um, we would have a surplus of seven thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-six cents, which we believe should go back to the town subscribers.
Thank you, Jack. What what got us here? Probably about six years ago. Entering into a contract, uh trash hauling contract. Uh, goes for three years with two one-year extensions, so it covers a five-year period, so that's kind of our cycle. So when the three board members, uh two which are still present, uh when the three of us sat down. Uh, the previous administrator uh was present at one of the meetings. Uh, as we were going through and deciding to go up the bid, because the previous hauler we had. We really weren't a hundred percent thrilled uh with how they, we had been with them for a long time, but companies have changes. So going through the process, it was probably the first time that that present three board members were going through the process. Um, we discovered that municipal trash. All the town buildings, police station, fire station, library. Um, was being paid for by the subscribers, because it was included in the contract. Doing some research, I found out from a previous Board of Health member that had been involved before. I came on board, which was on a wait nine years ago now. It wasn't intentional to get the municipal trash paid for by the subscribers versus being paid for by the taxpayer money. It was an added value when they negotiated the contract, when they got the low bidder. That they decided they wanted to go with because they were qualified to do the job, not just the price. They said, what about the municipal trash? Can we get that covered in that same number? So that's how it came about, and that's how it became part of.
It wasn't really that the taxpayers were paying extra, it was negotiated that they would pick up the the uh municipal trash. And it's not.
Subscribers.
Right.
Two, right, two pots of money here, we're talking about subscriber money. And of course, all this came about, and I'm sure you remember, when the town financially dies streets. And trash went away. Taxpayer funded town pickup for everybody went away. That was one of the things that they could not afford it.
Yeah, the the history of it was that it. You know, originally, that that it was part of the budget to pay for trash removal or to 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 get rid of it. And then when there was a budget crunch, uh one way that we balanced the budget was just to eliminate. The the cost of trash uh disposal. And told everybody in town, you know what, you're on your own. So and there was no more uh place to dispose. You had to hire, pay a company to do it. So, and there was no more, uh, place to dispose, you had to hire, pay a company to do it. And then the company, then the Board of Health negotiated this outside of the budget. So that that's why we all get tax bill, we all get trash bills. Um, and that's not part of our operating budget.
So when we went through this process and we discovered that the municipal trash was being paid for by the subscribers, we knew that was a kind of. Something that needed to be corrected. Unfortunately, over the last three, four years, things have happened that have taken our attention away from this. Um, so now we're back on and wanna make sure that we get, uh, the discussion going on before the town warrant. So that we can get this accounting era adjusted. Um, now, we'll have to have discussions with Jody, we'll have to have discussions with, uh, Eric, Eric, our accountant. To decide what the accounting processes to, how, how you guys make that shift of money.
And I would just, just to kind of refresh everybody's memory and having conversations when I was on the FinCom, when we talked about this.
Right, we were talking about engineers.
Yeah, actually establishing, uh, an enterprise fund. Because one of the things that was happening is the money's collected and this overage goes into the, you know, basically goes into free cash and down to the next year. Whereas if it was in a revolving fund, in an enterprise fund, then that money stays in that fund if you set the rate.
Right.
You can set it based on the money that you have left, but the overage, the overage from the previous year. Can figure into the rate for the next year and it's, it's a more elegant.
Discussions about enterprise accounts versus revolving accounts, it would be a revolving account. Uh, we discovered with discussions that an enterprise account would be something like with the water, the pot.
Right.
Because they have physical equipment.
That's right.
So we have no physical equipment, we don't have our own trash truck, you know, own the dumpsters, the totes, so a revolving account. Um, would be appropriate because like in this case, um, seventy two hundred dollars could have come off what the subscribers were gonna pay the next year. But as Mike pointed out, all that money gets shifted magically into free cash. Now there are other monies that we collect, there are the monies that we collect from sticker sales, and you'll see here. Sticker sales can range anywhere from sixty seven hundred dollars to thirty two hundred dollars a year. Those funds that are collected to pay for the extra trash that people wanna put out is ending up. Outside of the Board of Health budget, we can't get that free cash.
Subscribers is free, so it can be applied by the town anywhere.
Correct, but it's subscriber money, it's not tax payment. So these, these two accounts are being, these monies are being commingled. And I'm not an accountant, but it doesn't sound like good bookkeeping to me. Now, Joe, you have a comment?
I think it's, um, I, I don't think it's an accounting issue or a bookkeeping issue per se, but I think that there's probably a such a different consideration. Um, that we can make as it relates to offering a service to our residents. And having them pay for their portion of the service, right? And then the town having operating costs that are folded into our operating budget, and I think that's what you guys are seeking.
We, we sort of imagined, um, that the town would set up a municipal trash account, and that would cover the expenses. For the municipal trash, now some of the trash, like at the library, it's two totals, so.
Well, it's a, it's a pretty simple process.
It is.
And it's one, you just send it, well, what you do is you just, you send a, you send a bill to each, to each, uh, rate payer, right? All you have to do is you send a bill to the library, send a bill to the police, send a bill to the town hall, and then each one of those departments builds it into their budget.
If that's the way the accounting people say is the best way to do it, like I said, we.
That's the only way to do it, that's the only way to do it when we have, when, when trash is outside the budget and it's a rate. What, what needs to be happening is when Kelly and Ryan do the bills, or when, 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 when you write the bills, you need to know where those totes are. And, and you need to send a bit to each, to each one of those departments, and they build it into their budget.
You're increasing the number of subscribers.
Right.
Right, if, if that's the way that's.
As far as the.
Yes.
Part of that, but I think to my point, um.
That's the way to, but that's the way to cover it.
Right, and we can give each department what that number is so that they can build it within plenty of time into their budget. It's approximately twenty thousand dollars, twenty two thousand dollars annually for the entire municipality. So it's not a, a large number, and it shouldn't, you know, disrupt anybody.
And the rest, and I, I think that just to, just around the.
Thousand six hundred dollars.
And just to round the discussion out, what happens is the rate payers pay in, the money goes into the, you know, goes into the town budget. And it's not, it's not like it's disappearing or, or subsidizing anybody. Uh, if it, actually, I suppose you could argue the only people who are being subsidized are the people who are not rate payers. Who have their trash picked up somewhere else, and that, those monies. And, and we did discuss the possibility of just building it into the taxes and just providing that service on budget to everybody.
Right, and the problem that was brought up with that is the contract goes up three percent every year, so now you're into an override situation from what I understand.
Well, the, the issue is even before we got to the increase, when we took the trash out of the budget several years ago. Um, that took it off budget. So just the first year that we were to put, to put trash collection into the budget again, it provided with everybody. The, the cost of the, the, the total cost of, of trash, which comes down to here of about, of about a half a million.
Yeah, it's, it's over that now.
Yeah, it's over that now, this is right, but that number would have to go into the budget. And that would increase more than two and a half. So in order for us to do it this way, you would have to have a, a vote, a two and a half override vote. And, and further, I, and I'm not certain if, if we built a revolving account. If we could, if we could actually require everybody to do it and still send bills to everybody, um, and have it off budget. Putting it through the revolving account, I don't know if that's possible, but that's something you may wanna talk about.
Right, that's obviously the, the accounting that goes on behind. Now, there are some other monies. Yes. Retained also, uh, within the contract, we get a forty five hundred dollar annual reimbursement. From, um, E L Harvey towards our hazardous waste day, and we get that every year. Hazardous waste day, we open to anyone in town.
Right.
Not just subscribers, even though it's something that's negotiated in the subscriber trash.
Well, but in that case, your, that money would go into the general fund down to free cash, and we're budgeting money within your budget to pay for it.
Right, but that forty five hundred dollars, like I said, that's negotiated subscriber money, so.
But it, yeah, but that's.
Person, but that forty five hundred dollars when we get the check.
Yeah, but.
Doesn't stay in Board of Health.
No, but it, no, but what it's doing is it's paying for the hazardous waste day.
A portion.
Yeah, so that, Joe, do you wanna?
Yeah, I was just saying, if you have a budget line item for hazardous waste day, and you get a supplemental, um, check or reimbursement check from E L Harvey. That's not an issue at all, it'll still be general fund money, it'll still stay in your, your budget line item. And we were just creating a revenue account to your corresponding expense account so that you would have those funds for that particular.
So the point is, the money, the money would go for what it's intended for. So it's not, it's, it's not going somewhere else, it's going to what it's intended for. And it, and it's easy because that does provide, you let anybody come. So that forty five hundred dollars would be getting, be, be, being given from to E L Harvey for everybody in the town. So it does, it, it does exactly what it's supposed to do.
I, I guess, while we're here.
Yep.
We're at the Board of Select, the Board of Social Select Board. This is something we're working on, and this is something that we're gonna want on the warrant. Um, because we're gonna want a revolving account to, accounting wise, retain those monies. So that the appropriate monies that should go back to the subscribers to either reduce the next year's, uh, rate. Or as one of the, um, finance committee members said, to enhance the Board of Health services to the subscribers. So that's the direction that we're going in. Uh, we will work with the departments that gets municipal trash pickup to not only help them account for the amount of money. That they're spending on trash that at this point they probably don't realize they're spending on trash. But to maybe even build in some efficiencies, make sure the dumpsters are the correct size. Make sure that we're not being built to pick up the parks department when the parks department isn't open. Because that's a seasonal service, so we'll, we'll, we'll do everything we can to work with the departments to kind of fine tune that number and make sure it's as accurate as possible. We do have a formula that was provided by Yale Hobby, it's like eleven dollars per yard. Is how you calculate that expense. Um, so we'll, you know, between now and when the town warrant closes, we're gonna, you know, budgets are due and things like that. We're gonna work with the, the departments, maybe one or two at a time, invite them to our meeting so that we can discuss this and prepare them. And, you know, help them understand, and they can tell us, yeah, we've got an eight-yard dumpster down at the senior site, we don't need that big dumpster. Can we save some money by getting a two-yard dumpster like the fire department? Um, we also have some, uh, dumpsters, some thirty-yard dumpsters that are negotiated within the contract. That we, uh, provide, one of them goes to hazardous waste day. Uh, in the past, uh, we've been asked for dumpsters been provided for, um, uh, festival. So we have to make sure that subscriber money is going to pay for subscriber services and town events. Are being paid for by.
On budget, right.
Uh, so the, the goal isn't to cause anybody any pain or anything like that. I know last year when we were talking about this just before budget times and it, the discussion was leaked and people were up in arms that they weren't gonna put any of this in their budget. But, but we're not, we're just trying to get it right.
Out there, yeah, right.
So.
Mike, you have a question?
Just one question, the, um, when you said the municipal was negotiated. Way back when the whole, we went to the subscribers, you had a, you, you got a contract for subscribers. And then we went on to negotiate an additional cost so they'd pick up the municipal trash?
No, what we, well, awesome. They, they sent out bids.
Yeah.
The bid came in that they decided to accept, I'm gonna assume it was the lowest number.
Yeah.
But it was also obviously a qualified contract. So as a value added, they said, hey. We don't need you to pick up the schools because that's negotiated separately. But for this dump, can you also pick up the municipal trash?
At no additional cost.
Right, and they said, yes.
Right, right.
But I wanna understand, and how do we know? That municipals, like, you threw out a twenty thousand dollar number for municipal.
Right now, twenty two thousand six seventy nine, it's on the second.
Again. Is it fair to say, though, that that was a long ago contract, and since then, now subscribers have been paying for that after that contract has lapsed?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, so when you said it was negotiated as a freebie add-on, at one time it was a freebie add-on. Is it fair to say that since then that contract has lapsed and it's no longer free and now subscribers are paying for it?
Well. It was included, it was included in the contract, so it wasn't necessarily.
Right, it was negotiated point, but.
Okay.
Is that?
Because there's, there's two components to the cost, there's the trucking and there's the disposal.
Mm-hmm.
Every year the trucking goes up, every year the disposal, what we pay per ton goes up. So it was the goat, in year one, it was included. Every year after that, it's an expense, and in discussions with, uh, E L Harvey. We found out what their formula is, so when so, when they bid on a contract with us. And they see that you have to pick up municipal trash because now it's part of the specs.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's, it wasn't part of the specs originally, but.
Now it is.
Every five years now, i- it's part of the specs.
Gets built in, yep.
So they have a formula, they say, all right, we, we've got a two-yard dumpster at the highway, we've got a two-yard dumpster at the fire department.
Yeah.
So they have a formula and they figure it out, and then they build that into the contract number that they give us. So year one was the only year that it was free.
Right. I think.
If you wanna put it down.
Right, right, and now it'll serve, it'll serve everyone better to have those two things divorced because it won't impact the, uh.
Because the easy way to do it is each department.
Right.
Builds it into their budget, and then they, they pay E L Harvey for it, it's negotiating the contract. But if, you know, if there's a, if the police station doesn't need a dumpster, they just have a tote, well, then they have the trash bill. If, if highway needs a dumpster, then they get a bill for E L Harvey for the dumpster.
There is a formula to calculate what the expenses for those totes.
Yeah, whatever it is.
Right.
The bill goes to the particular department, and it goes with the tote, and then whatever department uses it is the one that pays the bill.
Right.
Um, like the, just like the telephone bill.
Correct, like I said, the way we imagined it, and obviously it would be discussions with you and Eric, is we didn't know if. Rather than bills, because we know what the number is, if the town on their budget had a line item, municipal trash. And then quarterly or annually, however you guys do your magic, that money just got shifted over to our account. So that those monies would, you know, be used within the Board of Health. Um, as far as the revolving account, we'll obviously have to also work with the finance people to come up with whatever that cap amount has to be. And that amount will most likely change every year. Because E L Harvey goes up three percent every year. Also, the tonnage cost, because we negotiated a long-term contract, it was like a twenty-year contract, which will be starting over again. That twenty years is almost up. Um, we know ahead of time, based on that twenty-year contract, what our tonnage rate goes up.
Is that the wind waste heat line item?
Correct. And that's, uh, I think there's seventeen or more member towns that Missy got involved with and negotiate that wheel of, well, we was wheel of wind waste contract. Uh, and it was very beneficial, because when that contract was first negotiated, the tonnage rate went way down. Because they had a twenty-year agreement, so for the first three, four, five years, that rate was lower. Than what the rate was that they were paying, and that's why if anybody was present during those, uh, annual town meetings. There always seemed like there was a lot of money in trash.
Yeah.
That money didn't just appear there, it was because of all these benefits.
Because of renegotiated rate that happened after the, yeah, after the first year, right?
Because I, one of the. Finance committee members, he remembers a year where a hundred and fifty thousand dollars were taken out of trash to help the town pay bills. Because there was no, no other way.
Right.
So it was probably good at that time that the money was in there. Again, now we're just, this is what we're working on to just try to get that account and fine tune to get it right. Is any suggestions or any questions?
My thought is to, to just talk with, you know, with, with Jody and Eric to come up with the, with the plan, but I think you're on the right track. Does anybody else have any other comments, or?
Yeah, just that, you, when you think about. I love the idea, same, when you think about the, you know, getting money back, it seems to me most of this, uh, savings. You're looking to give back to the subscribers, I guess, and the people that, well, paid for the services.
Overage and services.
I would just be really clear on that as you go forward, because it does seem like there's two different things going on, on, on how monies are being allocated. But to make sure the subscribers know, then this could help reduce, you know, your three percent increase year-over-year if you've got excess funds, things like that. As long as you make it clear it's going back to subscribers, you know, I think that'll, it'll be an easy pass.
Sure. Just wanna say that Jack worked on this with, um, Chair of, of the. Board of Health, and I think you guys have done a great job sort of looking at a program and evaluating its usefulness, its effectiveness, its efficiency. Um, and the, the next steps for the board really come down to, you know, pulling it from each department budget to create a separate line item. Or just letting the departments manage their own needs, um, as it relates to that, so I think it's, it's pretty easy there. Um, and then just adopting the, the last one, the law chapter and section. Um, putting that, I think that's, we're happy to work with you guys to figure that part out.
Thanks very good.
Great job, guys.
Perfect. Thanks for the data.
Thank you, thanks very much. Number six, uh, meta grant application. Is, uh, gonna do this, is Ann on or?
Actually, we have, uh, uh, woman from, um.
From Rice Engineering.
Yes, uh, we had, um.
Welcome.
I'm sorry, Ann and I and, uh, Bill McHenry, uh, were approached, uh, by Kelly Brown, uh, and she brought up the fact that there was an opportunity. To apply for a grant under the meta program, which is technically assistance. To apply for a grant under the meta program, which is a technical assistance program. Uh, that is sponsored uh, through the Department of Energy. Um, the grant is for approximately fifteen thousand dollars uh, worth of services. Which include town hall, fire department, highway department. And basically, uh, we have a, a rise as a contracted vendor through. Uh, the state and they're proposing to come in and review of, of the available uh, utility usage. At each of those facilities, they're gonna conduct a walkthrough of the facility review, potential energy efficiency. Uh, opportunities for both energy sources, include a review of. The building envelopes, heating and domestic water, heating equipment and associated distribution systems. And other uh, equipment appliances, plugs, heads, lighting and all of that. And then. Put together a report uh, that will basically outline uh, a series of recommendations. Uh, to uh, implement what they have found. Uh, it's basically a, a way to, to do an inventory of where we are in terms of energy efficiency. Uh, with our town buildings, particularly those three buildings, town hall, fire department and highway department. They actually came out, they did a walk through the building, they went up into the attic. Uh, and uh, you know, looked at all the heating systems, H P A C. The uh, uh, many splits and that kind of thing. So I don't know if you wanna add anything to the discussion or.
Just for the purposes of the meeting minutes, um, we're um, a utility uh. A pro, um, program, excuse me, project expediter uh, vendor, not a state contracted um, vendor through the program. Um, just, just wanna make sure that that's clear. So we have worked with numerous municipalities. Uh, in the past on these meta grants and they're a really great way of providing um, an assessment that uh. Gives a report at the end of that assessment and provides a roadmap to um. Implementing some actions and the assessment itself provide, as you said, it provides. Um, specific uh, energy efficiency measures and you listed out a number of what those energy uh, efficiency measures might cover. Um, it also uh, discusses estimated costs for those measures and uh, energy and. Um, cost savings as well. In the long run, if those changes were implemented. And at that point, after the town were to receive an assessment, if it were awarded this meta grant. Um, you would be able to decide which ones you go with, which ones you prioritize. Um, and we're happy to help. Uh, with financing at that point to identifying other grants that can help support implementation of those recommendations. And um, the deadline for this grant is November seventeenth at four P M, which is this Friday. So it's coming right up, but I um, myself and my colleague are working with um. Uh, David and Ann on, and Bill um, to pull the materials together for the submission.
And the, and the grant amount is fifteen thousand dollars and it stands with the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Department of Energy Resources, we were actually encouraged uh, to apply for.
It's like a mass saves for.
I guess that that's a good.
It sounds great to me.
The, the land use committee voted to support this, applying for this grant.
And does any, any of the members have any other questions? So at that point, I, I'd be looking for motions to authorize the interim administrator to sign the meta grant application.
So moved.
Thank you. Right, all those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, discuss the highway superintendent position. Wanna come on up, John? Well, you've been the.
That, that's a hot seat.
Just kidding.
Just kidding. Well, the issue is that John had uh, a- actually the. David had put this on the agenda, but John had called me. Um, to ask, you know, what his position, you know, what, what was gonna happen with the position? And I told him that we had, we had, uh, you know, we had one workshop, but we really had not. Uh, move forward with it. And you know, his issue was he's been putting in time and effort and I think he has done an, an exemplary job. But we wanted to discuss it. And I, I think we're in, and I, I'll just say this, um, I'm gonna say this publicly. That when we first uh, decided to put him as an interim, the idea was that he would be a placeholder. And we would have the Collins Center um, do a review and make a recommendation to do a job search. And in that process, um, you know, the folks that actually did the review, the two of them, one I spoke with. Uh, made two, two comments to me. One of all, it doesn't need to be a degree person. And secondly, that John was doing an outstanding job. And, and I will say personally that, that I think that John has earned a shot. Uh, but I told him honestly that I have not discussed this with anyone else. And that, uh, that we would discuss it, so. David thought it would be good of you to put it on the agenda, so I said that was fine. And I think, I think we do need to. You know, to make a decision or have more discussion about it, so I could open the floor to anybody else who has.
I'd actually like to, to, you know, state that I concur with what Mike has said. And I've had the opportunity for the last five months to work with John. And uh, having worked with a number of highway superintendents and D P W superintendents and. Uh, people that are in that uh, department or field. Uh, John has done an outstanding job for the town. He puts the hours in. He, he does over and above what's expected of him and. And I just wanna, it's, it would be my recommendation that he be moved from the interim position to. The permanent uh, highway superintendent, whichever that comes down the road to be in the future. But I think he needs to be paid in accordance with the, the quality and the type and the, the work he's doing.
I mean, my thought would be that it would be a, a, appointed into a position. You know, pending uh, contract negotiation, agreed about. But the first step is just to agree that, that we would give him a shot to be the, you know, the, the, the permanent. With a contract, you know. With a one-year term or two-year term, we could revisit at the end of that, but that's my thoughts. So I would open. Up for anybody else that has been.
Just, should some of this actually, could this be executive session to discuss?
Since the contract negotiation.
I asked, I asked that question. This part needs to be in the open. Once we make the decision. That we would give, make him, make him the permanent one, then we would go into executive session to discuss. The contract and, and all of the uh.
So, so you just, just cut me off if I go too far, but I believe we've already negotiated. A salary for the interim position, which he's currently serving, is that correct?
Well, we, well, we.
Well, we get, he got an increase.
Yeah, so he needs to serve as interim.
Yes, to serve as interim.
Yes, but I think that he's working at a higher level than the salary he's currently making.
And I, I mean, I'll be honest, I've heard John, you've talked, I've. No issues with the performance. Um, if I were any shoes, I wanted the full-time position, I'd be doing exactly what he's doing.
Yep.
You, 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 you work for the job you want, not necessarily the job you have, so I'm with you. My concern would be that we don't know what the highway superintendent job is, cause we do not, you never had a highway superintendent. I think we had a highway surveyor. Two, the only highway superintendent position I've seen described was based on. The work that was, good work that was done for the Collins Center and it was uh, I'm not even sure what level of management that was, so. There was a lot of ambiguity here, so unless we further define what exactly the role is we're bringing him onto. Do we have?
So is this, well, is this creating a new position for our town?
What, what I would, right, that I would, what I would, what I would say is that he would, he would replace. The, the role that Alan Tatro did.
As survey.
As survey, right, which, well, that will actually, a- actually, if you really dig into it. There were always, there were two positions. It was the highway surveyor and the highway superintendent. The highway surveyor was elected. And whoever was the elected surveyor always was paid as the superintendent.
I've just never seen the superintendent role ever mentioned anywhere.
Right.
Because, I mean, so if it was never indoctrinated in any. I don't think that position exists.
Well, I'm just.
But I, I use that as an example.
I don't know, I know, but I mean, I, I just wanna be. It's um.
Unfortunately, it has to be discussed in the, in.
No, I'm okay with, right, open meeting. I'm just sort of like, we're, we're forty-five, sixty days out of. Starting to organize our more permanent structure of which some of the recommendations John and Dan made could be incorporated into that. It's un, you know. There was no timeline foot on the interim, so what we're saying is. You want me to move into a position that's still in my mind's undefined now.
Well, I, I don't, I, I don't think so. I, I, my, my take on it is that it's, it's, he's in the, he's the interim. Highway superintendent.
Yeah.
Um, and I, and again, I think to make him the permanent highway superintendent. I, I don't think that's a problem. It's just to have him continue doing what he's doing. We're gonna negotiate a salary, but the next step is. We don't know if, if that position is gonna still be there. Will we negotiate this or if there's gonna be another level or if the role, and, and at that point, we would have to, again. We're, we're not saying that he's gonna automatically get that role either.
Well, it, my point was when the presentation was made, we were talking about a reorganization.
Right.
Where a position might be eliminated. I think, you know, I tried, made that point saying, so you've gotta be really, it's harder to undo than do. So once we make these decisions. It's a lot harder to reverse things and things, especially when they're contractual. I'm not sure why at this point we're not looking at a forty-five to sixty-day window to, to. You know, start to firm up.
Can I ask you that in sixty days, you would be up or putting that?
I would say, I, I'll say this in open session. I am, for the most part, I think we should be looking for the best possible candidate. I would think John has an inside track to that, could be part of that process. Um. But given that we don't know what we need exactly.
Well, forget what we need for a second. Is it fair for an individual to continue to serve in the position at the behest of a political process? Like.
It's not a political process, this is an organization, this is.
Well, it is, it is.
Sixty days, it, it, like, what you're talking about is a, a political process of generating an organizational structure. What he's talking about is his job position and how he gets paid. And right now, what I'm saying, that should be status quo as we start to form the organization. So it's not.
Status quo would be him.
Is serving his interim, serving his interim at a position was agreed to and negotiated, agreed?
And, 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 and I will say that, and the rest of that story is that. When we started this, we didn't anticipate that we were gonna have to replace town administrator. There was gonna be a piece that was gonna take it. And that was, that was, that predated Alan retiring.
Yeah.
So the, the, so that this has been delayed because of that other missing person. Um, that.
When we went to an appointed highway surveyor, one of the reasons we took to the floor was that the position. Requires a level of expertise and, you know, understanding of the trade.
Right, but beyond that, we've already had a, an outside organization. The Collins Center do a review and told us for the current position or for that position to run the roads. And even to go further, even to, we were gonna have them take care of the, you know, the grounds maintenance too. It doesn't have to be somebody with a degree. So, I, I mean, we've, we've moved past.
Would we want somebody that is fully knowledgeable at all ways to resurface and repave uh, roads and all the different. Uh, ways it can be done to fig, figure out which is the best process for which road in Mendon? Is that something we want?
Somebody just, that's what we just baited into.
Yes.
I think we need to, well, to make sure it's done.
Sure.
I think they said they could talk to us about recommendations, cause I was in the meeting with you.
Talk to us about recommendations.
And. Yeah, the, the, the short answer is, the short answer is yes, right. The, the longer answer is, you know, there's, do you need someone who was an expert in, in all of the ins and outs of it to execute it? And the answer is no. You know, at least according to Collins Center, they said that.
How long it's, how long have you been in this position?
It's the interim position?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The interim.
Interim position since June.
So how long does interim last? Like, we didn't define that.
Right, well, we actually, we, we did define it. We did define it as pending hiring a permanent person. And again, the idea was it was gonna be done by now, but when we started that process. We assume we would still have a town administrator who would work on it day to day and that it would get done so that by this time we would. We would be further aligned than we are.
I just feel like realistically, we're six months out from that process.
Yeah, I, I do agree.
I feel like that's incredible.
Coming.
Right.
And, and it's been forty-five days out for a long time now.
Yeah.
Um. That's where I am.
My biggest thing is we should put, we should, I think I was the one who said prior to the workshop. We should be initiating our search for this position, but we chose not to. I, I.
A lot of other stuff.
Well, no, but I mean, if we wanna be fair, I just wanna cast a wide net look for the best possible candidate. I happen to think John is a very good candidate. But I also think due diligence says we should see who or who's out there, what's out there.
And I, and I, and I, I'll say it again, I think, and I will say this, that at the M M A conference last January. I spoke to two different highway superintendents in the area. And was told that it was gonna be very difficult to find somebody who's gonna fill the role. I think we have somebody who is filling the role, who has been doing the role. And I happen to think that John would be a good choice with the idea that we may very well establish. Someone, another person. Who may oversee both the role down there at highway. And the parks, and we don't know how that's gonna shake out. And again, all of this is pending a negotiation and we're not, all I'm saying is. I would, I would support making John. Uh, making his position where he is right now permanent. Although I know that we, we're, we're actually, it, it's in flux of what that's gonna be, but the role of what he's doing. Um, is not necessar, is not going to be, you know, what we were talking about in the last session. But I think to give him some security and promote from within, he certainly, as, as you aptly pointed out, Mike, he's. He's working for the job he wants, not the job that he's got right now. But I think we should, we should make his position permanent pending a successful negotiation. Now that we go into executive session, discuss it, come up with it, and when, when we're done, he may not want that. I don't know. But I think it would be appropriate to make him from interim, to make him the, we'll call it highway surveyor. Or a highway superintendent or road, or I would say probably road superintendent. Uh, cause they're not all highways, right? And, and then we'll go in to negotiate what the salary should be and we'll see if it works and if he accepts it. Then, you know, then we take the next step from there. But that's, that, that's my thought. But again, I'm just one member of a five-member board, so.
I just wanna understand why. Why putting him in this position has some sort of challenge to the. Sort of like study on what we should change about the D P W, like why does solidifying the job that he's doing and paying him for the job that he's doing. Change how. Yeah.
Overseer. I guess what I would, what I would say is that based on what's going on and what, what the Collins Center had said. That regardless of what you call it, there's going to be somebody who's gonna be in that, in that highway department doing what he's doing.
Well, technically, based on the recommendation given, there wouldn't be, that position doesn't exist, what you're doing today. Because it's, it has highway superintendent, but it's over all of public works.
Right, but we.
But just saying.
But we're not, right, but let's be clear. I know that, that, that position, that position that you're talking about is something that we still have to determine. But whether we create that position or not, there's still gonna be somebody in that, in that department.
But that's a form and role based on the recommendation by the folks that presented to us.
Well, you could call it, but yeah, I guess you could call it a form. That's kinda what we, what we started talking about.
Well, no, no, then that won't be really clear. We at, or is the position we're talking about, the form and role that was laid out by the presentation made by John and Dan? Or is it highway superintendent, which is a different role that was in the presentation by John and Dan?
Well, I think.
Because if it's different, not one of those two things, then we've added a position that cannot be removed upon reorganizing, we do it down the road.
Okay, can I easily be removed?
Can we renegotiate the interim position contract?
Well, I guess I would ask you, John, how you feel about this? I mean, if it's just about more money while. John, how you feel about this? I mean, if it's just about more money while we finish getting Iraq together. We can discuss that.
More money. It's about stability. I mean, I'm the interim surveyor. Six months from now, you could say to me, well, you know what? You're not the interim surveyor anymore. This is all this, I mean, I have. There's work stuff that's going on that's held up right now. There's also personal stuff that I have on hold until we determine what's going on.
How long is that? Well, I really feel for you, man. I can't imagine. It feels to me like there's only one right solution and anything else is a poke in the eye.
Well, it, I mean, it does strike me that the big reorganization is going to be a slower process. I mean, once we get our town administrator in and that's not even going to be the first, that's going to be like going into budget season. So I feel like. The, you know, public works reorganization is not going to be right away. So it's 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 going to be. Process. So I'm also. Like in in favor of getting some stability because I think it's good for the town also because we are, we're coming into winter and. The town needs to have stability to get through.
I can tell you that. The department down there is. Yeah, I want to say on edge. But they are, their rest have had guys say that.
I think, you you know what, let's. I I I think that realistically, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we are a year away from making that decision. And for us to appoint somebody. To be the, the the road superintendent. To give them a year contract with the understanding that this could all change. But I think I would, I would like to. I I'd like to get a motion to appoint. Uh, to point John Dudley as the, as the road superintendent. And, you know, pending a successful negotiation with an understanding it would be a one year contract. While we transition to whatever it is that we decide to. Do a year from now, but it gives him some stability. And it wasn't for a good job.
So is that, but is that? Creating a new, it's creating a new title, right? We do not have that title existing. Do we need to?
Well, we could call.
To create a title like as part of the process.
I mean, the highway surveyor, we have a highway surveyor. I'm not sure I have a plan with language.
Yeah, I don't care.
I just know the Collins Center recommend to get him away from that square because it's a whole.
Right, but that but that's the larger.
Right, but. That, yeah, that would come into that whole reorganization potentially.
So. Um, I move to a point, John Dudley, uh, as highway surveyor pending contract negotiations.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
May.
So it's four to one and it's a done deal? So. We'll. Yes, we'll put we'll we'll negotiate and you come up with uh, with what you're looking for and.
We also have a um, workshop in two weeks.
Yes. Right. Yeah, we'll probably. Do an executive session at that workshop. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, John. Appreciate it.
All right. Capital plan. Overview.
Number stuff earlier in the agenda.
Jody, did you send that to me or are you going to share?
No, I did, but I don't know.
Oh, to you. Okay, give me one second.
One of the members of the board has to play guitar during the interlude.
I'm sorry, I just.
Okay. Everybody? So this, oh, yeah, we've been through this. So this is me. Somebody's going to fill this all. Yeah. I want to refer signature. I didn't, I just looked at that. I didn't understand. Yeah, I I because it because it's a computer and they didn't bring it out far enough.
I might not have access to.
And just.
That is efficient. Fifty.
I don't have permissions to look at that document.
Yeah, you gotta use the share button and it will change the permissions for the, like, we can look at that and.
Yeah, if you just email to me directly, I'll get it.
So I'm going to do this to help see her. What's that? That's something you can.
Yeah, of course.
Actually, I am. You want to know? I can't notarize them now.
Nevermind.
I've never notarized anything.
Well, you know what? I'm a, listen, I'm a, listen, I'm a notary too. So. But I can't.
Stop going, Alan.
Yeah. All right, so this is.
Okay. Ready?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so. Just to kind of bring us all up to speed, we've had lots of conversations in the last several months just about. Capital planning and really the part that it plays in a successful um, management of resources. So together with David, we talked a lot about um, how we can sort of. Give you guys a really good, solid foundation to be able to start thinking about our capital needs. Um, and how that works really into the budgeting process. So we're going to talk about capital planning. Um, one of the next line. Um, I bring this slide up. This is the distinguished budget award. I don't know who's familiar with the GFOA. Um, but it's the Government Finance Officers Association, and they really set the bar for what it looks like to carve out a comprehensive. Um, basically sustainable and a multi-year capital plan. So they established this budget award um, to really. Give you a concrete example of how we can as a community and communities across the Commonwealth really. Um, create a a budgetary process and really a fiscal process that highlights these things. The next slide will show sort of the components of what that award criteria looks like. And this is important because a capital improvement plan is part of that criteria. Financial policies, the capital improvement plan and financial trend monitoring. Um, alongside of a financial forecast are really key and core components to carving out a good financial plan for the town. Um. The part that we'll be focusing on tonight um, is really isolating the capital improvement piece of this plan. And really giving you guys a deeper dive into what is um. What components that that makes up. So if we go to the next slide, um. We'll talk about. We'll talk about the capital improvement plan as a six year look ahead um, around buildings, equipment, infrastructure. Um, it can even bridge over into pavement management. And look at how we can um. Assess the needs across the town and put a plan around it. This is really important. You can go to the next slide. Um, it coordinates. It facilitates coordination between our capital needs and our operating budgets. Um, we identify economical means to finance projects, whether again, it be through funding sources through the budget or other funding sources. Um, we can increase opportunities and visibility into being able to get state aid. Um, it allows us to focus on our community's objectives. And really prudent planning will give way to future generations and the sustainability of our of our town. Um, I did the last one also that I wanted to mention was keeping the public informed about our future needs and projects. Um, a lot of the things that I've heard since I've been um, a member of the finance team is. Being able to have boards and committees be informed so that they can be empowered to make good decisions. And having the information before it's just in front of them with no backstory kind of makes you feel a little bit at a disadvantage to be able to make a really good decision. Kind of off the cuff, if you will. So this will offer some greater vis- visibility. So an overview um, of a capital improvement plan really gives us a blueprint for the planning of our capital expenditures. Um, there's two core parts to it, the capital program and the capital budget. The capital program really identifies assets that are tangible assets um. Over twenty five thousand dollars with a minimum useful life of under five years. And the capital budget portion of this is really. A look ahead to what our upcoming capital spending needs are. And what really gets baked into our budget. So how do we, how do we get there? What do we do? Um. One of the first steps in a capital improvement plan is to reconstitute or really to create a CPC, capital planning committee. The good news is, for those of you that don't know, um, the Mendon has, the Mendon, the town has already um. Adopted chapter three, section. Um, or in chapter three, section eight of our local bylaws, we've already adopted that part of mass general law to be able to have a capital planning committee. So the recommendation here is to consider reconstituting that capital planning committee. Um, whose responsibilities would be to um. Be a dedicated advisory resource to um, the town's capital program.
Joe, can I interrupt you and ask, did, do you know if Ellen put that request out already?
For, oh, oh, for filling those vacancies.
They know with the vacancies.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, so we're going to have to, we need to have her add that.
Yeah, just uh, can um. Say a FinCon subcommittee service CPC?
You you can. It it, the members are all um, appointed by this board. So you guys have appointing authority over the capital planning committee.
But and that's the short term, but that's the short term thing because. Overall, the this, the recommendation of the uh. Um, of the DLS. Was to change the way that he uh, FinCom was appointed. So to take it away from this board. To make it as a, as a. Kind of a standalone. Group that would look at it from a different angle. Like many other towns, they have a combination of elected. FinCom members and actually the town moderator. Appoints some of the members. To take it away from the.
But I feel you wouldn't want overlapping.
No.
Members, right?
Agree, right, that's right. But I'm just. I apologize for the interruption.
No, it's fine. Um. So we basically have a uh, five member board right now, um, or opportunities for five members to serve. Um, once that committee gets reconstituted, should you choose to do that?
Did you say five for the, because I thought it was three?
It's it's five for three year overlapping terms.
That's what the bylaw says?
That's right.
Okay.
So do you you start with shorter terms for some? How does that work when you reconstitute?
I could be wrong. Let me just tell the jerk.
Yeah, thank you.
It has been advertised. Okay.
It has been advertised, but three or four, it just says.
It just says.
Yeah, we didn't say.
Anybody.
We'd be happy to.
Yeah, I had asked Ellen to advertise all of the positions.
Right, I said the same thing, right? But we had actually, at one point, we. Well, we never abolished it. We just, the people resigned and.
Yeah, the bylaw is a five members, five members appointed by the slot board.
Right, so we don't really need to do anything to reactivate.
We know, so it's been advertised. Okay, so we just.
Actively.
Right. Okay.
And you'd probably want to do, like I said, you want, you'd want to represent from the finance. Probably somebody from the school. Uh, a citizen, some banker, somebody that.
Yeah, we have to talk about the whole.
Yeah.
Reason of an overlapping thing and if it if it was possible or not, because I know at some point it was frowned upon to do that. I don't know why. But.
Great, um, you can go to. So I like to kind of look at this visually and say, how do we do this? And what are the next steps to be able to get us from? A data collection standpoint all the way to a comprehensive plan. Um, phase one would really look like a capital asset inventory and taking, taking um. Taking a look around the town, buildings, equipment, fleets, infrastructure, and seeing what we currently have under our management, right? Um. We'd review all the existing assets. We would cross check it with our insurance schedules. Um, insured buildings, insured vehicles. It's a great way to, you know, do a due diligence, prudent check. Do we still own this? Do we still have that? Is, you know, that sort of thing. Um. And. There's also a schedule of fixed assets that we're required to report on from an audit standpoint, from um, GASB, it's the government. Accounting Standards Board Statement thirty four, we're required to have a schedule of fixed assets that we maintain. Um, so again, between these three different avenues, we can kind of cross check all of our data to get a comprehensive view of what we've got. Um. The next phase is really to then take a look across any open projects that we have. Um, and see if there are any additional funding requirements for a half done project. Um, maybe there's. A project that's completed, but it was never. Fully spent. So maybe there's some unused funds there. I think about special articles and things that need to be cleaned up sort of across our books so that we can reallocate those monies, right? So this is another kind of prudent step in kind of seeing what's where and what that status is. Um, phase three is really. An opportunity to assess our financial capacity as a town. Um. And to be able to make decisions that are going to keep our tax rate stable. Um, we're balancing our debt and operating expenditures. Um, we're we're determining debt capacity. Um, and percentage levels. And this is another big one for me, which is maximizing government aid. And making sure that we can time projects in ways and select projects that potentially um. Have matching funds or just full out grant funds, things like that. So it'll be an opportunity to assess that capacity and and make some um, good decisions around that. Next slide, phase four, we solicit, compile and evaluate requests. Um, and we do so with a defined set of of objectives, and I'll get into that a little bit later. Um. But that would be the next step is really engaging um, department heads. We would look to. Identify whether the requests that are coming in are to preserve and enhance town assets. Um, if it's to increase our effectiveness and or efficiency. Um, if it's just straight up promoting good stewardship of of what we've got. Um, are we increasing revenues? Are we getting matching funds and grants? And then really also identifying, um. Are there future liabilities with the decisions we're making today, right? So if we're building a brand new building. And we're not factoring in the increased costs for heating and cooling. As an example, that's not a thorough prudent. Plan, right? Because we're not. Thinking ahead to what this today decision yields in a few years from now, right? So there's that piece. Um. And then the last part of it is, no, sorry, I skipped a step. Phase five would be prioritization. So again, we would have a. Prioritization criteria that would allow us to sort of rate and rank. Um, based on timing, based on immediate needs, um. Based on funding sources for said project and really have an opportunity to kind of look across the board and say, okay, let's gain agreement on what our priorities are. And then from there, we can take all of these inputs and carve out a capital improvement plan. This is something that we would review um, with the capital planning committee. We would review it with obviously the finance team, um, the town administration. You and really make sure that we're we're on track for decisions we've made and committed to. And then have an opportunity to um, reevaluate based on things that that come down the pipe that maybe are not expected. Um. So kind of drilling down a little bit, this is sort of an appendix. If you will, but if you remember, could sort of phase one, there's going to be a quiz, so pay attention. Um. The first part of it was the asset inventory, and so we're trying to do things smarter, not harder, right? And. Using a a Microsoft form, um, thank you, Jason and David for your assist on that. Um, really just streamline the collection process so that we can ensure that. Really just streamline the collection process so that we can ensure that not only the information that we're anticipating getting, but it's exactly what we need, right? So we can customize forms and fields and make sure that those things are filled out in a way that we're not going back and forth for more information. From there, we're able to export it and compile it, and we'll talk about that in a second. But the, the next phase two would, again, project status, drilling a little deeper on that. Like I said, identify and review open projects, what their status is. Next slide, determine if there's any future funding needs, if there's unspent funds, maintenance. How do we, how do we sort of clean up the pieces, right, as a project? And how do we close that out besides, you know, project closing documents or what have you? Let's look at where our resources are in unspent funds and get them back to where they need to be. Phase three, again, financial capacity. What does our operating budget look like? What does our debt service look like? What other funding sources do we have? And really look and see if a project makes more sense to be as, you know, part of a predetermined amount within our operating budget year over year, that it's a staple in our budget that we can do something every year. Or what are things that we're going to leverage free cash for? What are we going to use stabilization for, CapEx? This will help us predict some of those things a bit better than just waiting for free cash at the end of the year. To then say, okay, now what can we do, right? So we kind of have that wish list in advance. Phase four, this is really the compilation stage where we would look at all of the information that has come in. Whether it be a facilities inventory, asset inventory, and fleet. And then there are two different forms really because the criteria is different, like the age of the building, roof, you know, different things that are unique to facilities as opposed, as opposed to assets or fleet. But we would compile all of this, which is going to be able to give us a full view of all the asks on the table and all the things that we're, we're predicting are going to come our way. Again, phase five, prioritization, the key here is really having a, a fixed set of metrics by which everything's going to be evaluated equally. And we're looking at everything with the same lens and can agree upon an approach. And then the last phase, phase six, again, this, this is sort of a sneak peek to what a capital improvement plan would look like. I know it's small, but the idea here is that the first section of it is what our capital budget looks like. So that first lane, if you will. And then the next six are what are our future predictions as far as, okay, we need a fire truck. Okay, well, is that in year one, two, three, all the way to year six? So now, okay, well, I can't have anything else in year six because I already have a hundred fifty thousand dollar fire truck earmarked for that fiscal year, right? So let's put this roof repair over in year two, right? This will also give us some opportunity to be flexible around making the most of our money in economic conditions. So if, if building supplies are through the roof, right, true story, last few years, we're not going to decide to do a whole bunch of, you know, renovations to buildings if maybe costs are through the roof unless it's an immediate need, right? But on the converse, let's say interest rates are really low and, and/or supplies are at reasonable rates. Maybe there's an opportunity there to say, you know what, like this, this, and this. Don't have holes in them yet, but they're gonna, let's do those now. So it just gives us that proactive window to say, okay, here are some things that we can, we can do. So a couple of concluding thoughts, then I'll take any questions. Again, a capital improvement plan program is really intended to improve communication and support through all phases of the budget process. Greater visibility, again, I think this is so important, especially, you know, conversations I've had with you guys as well as the FinCom and, and really financially-driven authoritative bodies, right? That need information to feel like you're making good, informed decisions about what's on the table, right? You don't want to hurt somebody's feelings, right? But the person looking across from you and being like, I really need a thing, right? This is going to give us an opportunity to let that part of it be sort of out of it, and you can look at the bigger global picture, which is kind of going out of order here. But again, it gives us that big picture mentality around our overall strategic goals as opposed to, here's what I need and I need it now, kind of in the moment. So overthinking, anticipating needs, and really that proactive versus reactive decision-making. Overall, it's a critical, a critical component for our economic development and strategic plan. And it's really hell, essential to the future financial health of our community and to our future generations. So I think you all agree that it's a good thing. I think that it's not anything new, I'm not coming up with this brand-new idea. I think that we've needed a little help in the, the past to be able to take the thoughts, put them on paper, and then start to build from there. So I'm hoping that this gave all of you a sort of a window into, we can make this happen. And I think it'll be a great thing for our community. Just so I can quote references. So next slide is just, again, this isn't all of my great ideas, right? So we have the Divisional Local Services, I can't say enough about the organization and the entity and the resource that it is to local officials, to permanent employees, but it, it really is fantastic. And they have a lot of tools and resources out there, a lot of which I, I pulled some ideas and thoughts. And then again, from the GF OA, which again is, is in, is a great organization in the financial world to be able to help round out some of these things and make them tangible for communities. Last slide.
Yeah, I have a quick question, I'm just going to go actually back to the slide for a point. So my first question would be around timing. As you know, we've got, you know, some non-recurring funds, specifically ARPA funds, that we have to spend by a certain time. Do you see a process like this getting in place to, to help with that decision?
Absolutely, I mean, once we start getting the asset inventory is, I, I kind of look at that as our maintenance bucket, right? So if we assess things across the board and say, okay, this is, we're going to need to replace this vehicle, we're going to need to replace that roof, we're going to need to patch that pavement. That kind of becomes our, our maintenance bucket, right? And then with the budget right around the corner and departments coming in with requests, right? Whether it's a project request or a, a capital request. Those are also going to be things that are put in front of us. So all you need is a couple of things to start prioritizing and being able to put into a plan. The funding source, to your point, is the critical component to making things happen, right? There's only so much money. So things that are built into sort of the, the capital budget is money that is operational, that is secured through the budget process. And we can use it to target said projects year over year. Maybe you start with fifteen thousand, twenty thousand. We have a building and maintenance account right now, let's look back and see what we've used it for. Let's see how much of that was expended, let's see what went into free cash, maybe there's an opportunity there.
And that's why you mentioned about knowing all of these special accounts and with. Talk, like for instance, don't, don't forget that we just sold this piece of property across from the ends.
Thirty-six Milford Street, right, that can only be used for a capital project. So anything defined is something you can secure debt for, right?
Well, that's the, was it forty thousand they gave us?
Yes.
For that.
As a donation, right, but the, the sale of the land was four hundred.
Right.
Yep.
But is all of it only used for capital expenditure?
No, just the, just the sale portion, the forty thousand was a donation.
So the sale portion would have to be.
And I believe they directed that though to conservation.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I believe they did.
They did put, they did put a, put a caveat on, right?
Okay.
Right, but, but. Okay, sure.
Can I just finish Brendan's? So to Brendan's point, funding sources is the, the biggest component. I shouldn't say biggest, there's lots of big things, but it's a critical component to any project request, right? So it's not an operational, that's part of this inventory of like that, the financial review of what money is where, what projects are outstanding. Look at the town hall, right? Like, what do we need to do to get this thing over the finish line? Like, there's certain things that we should look at what we've got going and not have a bunch of loose ends everywhere and see what we can do to clean those things up and push them over the finish line and then start something new.
My question was, well, this is a great plan, it's a great idea. Like you said, we've been talking about this. But my, my one question is like you and David and then the next TA. Like, how do you make this culturally a part of like how people do work here? Because this is amazing if you're fiscally focused, but if you're not, is the only carrot just going to be in order to get your money, you need to get your request in? Or is there like some change that's going to happen at department meetings or you're going to go out and do a roadshow or like?
I mean, no, I, I, I would, I would tell you that, you know, you, you guys are the, the drivers of, of a lot of the big picture things. And so I think that if it, my first step would be doing what we're doing, right? And talking about, this is the direction we're focused, are we, are we good with that, right? And then it starts at the top. The town administrator would take something like this in conjunction with whomever else and, and talk about it at department meetings. Talk about it and why these things are critical to the roles, right? And so you can have people that are naturally financially focused and sort of projecting out what their needs are. And then it's just not somebody else's forte, right? But it's still a part of the job. And so I think that there's an opportunity to empower people, to engage people, to give them the tools to do these types of brain exercises, if you will. Absolutely, and so again, this is, this is one piece of that puzzle, right? So that we started out with the, the three things. You know, the financial metrics, that's more like finance department-focused, financial policies. It really is a collaborative effort between the boards and committees and bylaw reviews and policymakers, right? And then this plan is, is really an engagement of staff and department heads and the town administrator and the financial team. But I think that that culture happens when you have a plan. People just, they're desperate for leadership, right? And if you show them, we have a lot of capable people, we have a lot of great employees. And I think that they just need a little bit of support and guidance. And something like this and showing them how and giving them the tools will help to start to help that.
Saying all the right words, you should go on politics.
I, I think it's a, a, I, I think it's a great point that you make, there, there is a cultural shift. But because what had happened at a certain point, when there was a, a real financial crisis and we laid off some cops and the idea of, well, we're just gonna be in survival mode and just, you know, never mind the actions, we're just gonna do, you know, the budget, you know, the growth, the growth piece and nothing new. But the needs don't go away.
And I, but I, I think that that, again, to your, to your point is, you know, again, it's a mentality about that, and I get it, right? Like, if you've had to lay people off, it's not a fun exercise, right? But I think that that's when we can really strategically use our funds for ways that they were intended, stabilization, reserves.
The rest of it is, it takes, it takes some work and planning to know where all that money is and where it is. You know, and it, and it takes a good staff, and we do have good staff.
Right.
I think, but we need to have a plan, and this is the first step, so it's great.
The other thing that happens is, once it's incorporated as part of the budgeting cycle, it becomes institutionalized.
Right, exactly.
And it becomes the, the finance committee, the.
It's like self-supporting.
Planning committee, yeah, work together.
Cultural shift.
And it's making a commitment. I've seen this done in other communities and, and it's, I've seen it completely fall flat on its face within two years. I mean, you know, like people say, oh, we don't want to do that, oh, we don't want to. It becomes a crisis, some crisis going on. If you commit to it regardless, and you say, right, we might not put two hundred thousand dollars into it this year, we can only do fifty. But, you know, you, you're still keeping the thing moving, so it becomes part of the institutional way that we do things here.
Like the culture shift has already started to some extent, especially with, with the department head meetings, which I've heard very positive things about from, from multiple department heads. So I think that that is, that already is bringing in that culture of collaboration and community.
And you want to give people a forum to talk, to talk about things, you know, you learn things. I said, you know, I don't want to be the person talking, I want to be the person listening to what people are saying and saying, all right, this is, this is where we got to go, you know? I, the last common head meeting, I heard very loudly about the, like a purchase order system. Why don't we have a purchase order system? Every other town in, I'm off, a purchase order system, it's time to get on board, you know, we got to get, get on board the train. You know, and, and I think that that's the kind of thing, and they told me that. I didn't suggest that, that was something that came out of the discussion.
Two things I want to touch on that, I don't want to lose what you said, Elena, because you made me think of something, and then David did as well. With regards to the staff, how do we bring them along? So we've already done dribs and drabs of that, right? With the department head meeting, we talked about approach, we talked about the fact that we were going to be presenting something to the board. We talked about everybody's role in it, and really it was just the minutia of figuring out what our collection forum was going to be and how we were going to look across those things. The other thing is, is we have a great opportunity right around the corner as well with the budget process and departments coming in to request different things. And so even if it's that quick touch point where we can get them thinking about not just what they're, what they might want down the road, right? And what, what, what can I get into this budget season? Like, let's think a bit bigger, let's think a li- little bit broader. Let's, maybe your needs in the highway department are going to be the same as, I don't know, someone in the fire department, like, and maybe we can share a truck. Like, there's all kinds of opportunities, right? To do that, and we can't do that unless we get the needs and requests and then, and can look at it across the board. So I think bringing them on in that early engagement is important. David, you had mentioned, I knew if I did this, I'd forget one of the two. Hang on, it's coming.
Yes, this is.
Last sentence. Oh, procurement. So totally, totally, point taken, we need something that, that we can address that. But the angle that I'm coming from is I want to do it right. I, I don't want to just buy a system, I don't want to just buy another system, I don't want to just invest in another software, right? I think that part of this prudent review is infrastructure, and it is looking at what is our technology strategy? What are we doing around X, Y, and Z? Like, I've seen too many times where we, we get something and then we don't use it to its potential. And then we're like, it doesn't work and I'm frustrated, let's get something else. Like, it's not always the software, right? It's, it's training, it's support, it's, it's just all kinds of things. And I just, I feel like there is a need for procurement software, there is a need for workforce management, there is a need for some different things. But John's needs might be the same as Dan's needs, and Dan's needs might overlap with Andrew. Like, we just need to have a bigger picture mentality around some of these isolated things. That's just my perspective, infrastructure being one of them. So they're not bad ideas, let's just do it right, and let's do that system-wide review, let's do that quick, not quick all the time, but do that due diligence so that we're making smart decisions that have lifespan, and we're not back here in another year, and we're not back here when there's three new board members, and we're not, like, it's hard. And so I think that if we can, if I can help equip you with this information to be able to start making these kinds of connections and decisions, then you're going to feel more empowered to tell the next person and feel confident about the things that you're, you're looking at and deciding, so.
I don't know why you think there are going to be three new board members. A question on timing, have you thought, or any thought around time boxing the different phases you laid out?
Say that again.
Have you time boxed any of the different phases you've laid out?
No, I mean, that would be next. I think, you know, ten, the expectation that I had was kind of framework, and I know I dove a little bit deeper than just framework, but I couldn't help myself. But no, I, I think that the next thing to do is really to look at what those deliverables and actual milestones are. Exactly. Exactly, and so I have not yet, but it's definitely on the radar.
And, and once again, I mean, and I think this is something you both are talking about in department head meetings in terms of initiating that collection. So by no means am I saying, do I think that's on you to do it? But I mean, I think the next thing, try to give some target, like is it sixty-day, ninety-day cycle for phase one?
Two weeks, you should know what you have, I'm just kidding.
Well, no, I, I was being generous, I kind of, I felt like, I, honestly, it's, it's a list that grows, right? So even to capture the first swath of things that everybody knows. That would be important just to baseline and add to it. Because the other thing is, question I have is, how do you integrate this well-thought-out plan process with the school? Who's also doing something similar, at what point do you try to bring those together? Because we have to see their needs.
Absolutely.
That same plan.
Yeah, no, it's a.
I can give you some economies of scale that both need.
Yeah.
At the same time, right?
I can guarantee you, there's a capital planning committee on the, at the school.
There is.
Oh, no, I.
That's where I feel we, you have sort of a reach into that world, right? And so when we look at our three, five, ten-year outlook, and that's sort of the next, next project as part of this is how do the, the needs of the school and what their upcoming debt requirements, like, what does that look like? I don't want to know that in August, right, for like, or I don't want to know that in April for, you know, a few months. So we've already had those conversations, so I think it'll give us that visibility. And within the sheet that's, that's not active there, but. But the the phase six, the capital plan, you'll be able to actually see a line there for schools. And so the schools and we can sort of earmark information that we already know about, like even highlighting it yellow and saying, okay, we know that there's a potential debt service that is going to be picked up in early FY twenty four or early FY twenty five. Like, that's for real. Talked to Jay Byer the other night. So we can put those placeholders in. And it's not so much that, oh, we can do a whole lot about it right now. We just know it's there and we don't lose sight of it. And that's the important part that I think is is very easy to have things talked about and then they kind of fall through the cracks and, oh, the thing and I forgot about that. So it's a really good mechanism to track sort of those things that might be on the horizon.
So how do you balance the timeline for near term things that are coming at us in the next six months to bringing online the formal plan, which, you know, is probably going to take more than six months to get to to a first iteration, if you will.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you just said the word I was gonna use iterative. Like, we need to look at this as an iterative process, right? So anytime something like this gets launched, whether it's in the corporate world and in municipal, it doesn't matter. Like, the the concepts are transferable, right? So we we need to launch something that is an agreed upon approach um with the understanding that there are going to be some things that are suitable to our needs as a town that doesn't have its own school district, right? We're a municipal district, so everything, at least these are sort of the the big picture targets that we're looking at and working with. And then we can augment based on our needs and what suits us. You guys might say, I want more visibility into this and we can carve that out. Or, you know, I just want an anecdotal section to put notes and, okay, let's just carve that out. And so as long as we come into it with the understanding that it's iterative, I think that's key. Um, and then the other part of getting it off the ground, this is, you know, our employees are our biggest resource. Our department heads are our biggest resource. They know their business. Lots of them have been in positions for a long time. And I think that leveraging their knowledge um or their knowledge of their area are going to give us information right off the bat. They're not going to have to, it's not going to take months on end to try to figure out what their assets are. What's going to be the hardest part is, how do I get it to you? Like, what how what do I say? Am I responsible for the roof on the library? Like, what exactly do you need? And my answer is, yes, yes, I do, but you're not. I don't expect you to be a construction expert and know what kind of shingles and when they need to be replaced. But let's write it down, right? Because it's in your purview. So I think it's the support piece is so critical to be able to making people feel empowered and successful. And I think that that's where David and I come in to be able to help rally that. And if we have if we have gaps, we'll give each other grace. Like, we're putting this up, you know, putting this out there and and we'll we'll keep working it until we get it right.
It's good to me.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Actually, thank you. So one thing, this is a hundred percent of uh Jody's initiative. She's taken responsibility for it. She's done an excellent job in putting this presentation together. Uh, we did discuss framework and things like that, but it's really, it's that's all her work, just so.
Well, we had we had discussed this.
Only if you like it. If you don't, it's half David's.
Is there anything you need from us specifically now?
Um, I don't think so right now unless, I I mean, I'll send the presentation out. If you guys have feedback, I'm open to feedback. This isn't a one trick. So Josh, is that form open now or department heads inputting their? Yes, so it's 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 not live yet, but that's our next step. So we sort of did this kind of free stakeholder buy in, you know, with the department meeting, kind of get them to know about what we're doing and then the next step is going to be the ask.
We did review the form at the last, we've actually talked about the capital plan twice with the department. And at the last meeting, we talked about the type of information that we're going to be looking for and the fact that we're going to use an electronic form so that we can capture the data and be able to manipulate and
And like I mentioned before, you know, it's not a one size fits all either, right? So the form might be great for maybe the senior center. But Dan's already got all this stuff on a spreadsheet. Dan, just send me the spreadsheet. You don't have to redo the work, right? We'll just cut and paste stuff into Excel. So we're going to work with departments very much in a way that is comfortable for them, but yields the same results, right? We're not looking at control how we do, it's just, this is what we need. Here are some ideas on how to best get it to us without, you know, recreating the wheel or going crazy and over complicating it. And like I said, we we have a jumping off point already with our schedule of vehicles. The assets that we manage, you know, as part of our audit, um, what we ensure. So we have, we have, we arguably could kind of spoon feed each department and say, okay, this is under your control, so to speak. Yes, no, yes, no, it still exists. Anything else you want to add? Okay, thanks. So I think that we can, we can get that information rather quickly.
Very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, uh, discuss teams transcription surfaces for minutes.
Ah, all right. So um, we've been on a teams uh premium, that's the license type uh trial uh which ends on November twentieth. And the the cost would be eight dollars per person per month thereabouts. It's there's obviously some sense in there. What we've been doing is trialing this package of features. One of the primary features you have all noticed is the AI summary features for transcription. But there are a lot of other features that come with the package that I want to just talk about first uh that we could utilize, but will kind of require us to come up with some policies for how we implement meetings. There are features like uh hand lowering, automatic hand lowering when people talk. Uh, if you didn't notice, that happens now in our meetings. There are town hall features for doing uh public meetings with chats off or with uh chats that are inaccessible after the guests leave the meetings. Uh, the way that we're sort of utilizing teams right now is in a much more corporate fashion where we just kind of like let everything fly um and connect to whoever connects. And if you have a teams license at home and you connect, you're going to get slightly different features than if you don't. All that sort of changes with this premium license where you can sort of direct how the meetings get set up.
Interesting, and I I have a question about that. I know, Mike, do you remember when the Dr. Ruchek, Merzcheck was still um ended up and and they would run, when they ran their hybrid meetings, they actually were running two platforms at once and they were broadcasting to everyone.
Yep.
But they could not, not everybody was in. Everybody could watch
Right.
from that broadcast. But then if someone wanted to speak, there was a mechanism for them and they would
Right, the Q and A mechanism.
They would bring them into a different.
Right.
I think they bring them, I think they had they had Zoom and Teams. I think they were running them both.
So you can, right, so you can do that sort of setup inside of teams. You can do Q and A with your with your uh constituency. You can moderate questions in an open forum. You can also do the broadcast portion, which is in the industry, it's called, the technology is called RTMP, which just basically means that um, you know, we have all this equipment here. We could stream this with these licenses, we could stream this content into teams and broadcast with full control over how that broadcast looks and feels, you know? But you put a little wizard hat on.
Yeah, who was it that runs, who is it that's running all that?
Who is it? So we, yeah, so if we went and did the like pure broadcast, that would be right, us doing it, you know? Our IT staff. The non like super manual features where you control all the broadcasts, the controlling of the meetings could be handled by any user. Those are just checkboxes. And those features are lit up right now with people who have our licenses. So you can imagine a state like in the future where Ellen might set up meetings that included a bunch of core organizers that had settings like users can't do chat until they're enabled or question moderation, and that would just happen automatically for each meeting.
One thing we should, we should keep in mind, and it was, I I think it was the the town moderator, Tom, that mentioned about, uh, and this might dovetail into what you were just talking about with Verizon and Comcast. And the contract we have is, you know, they provide a certain amount of money, provide services, and they're supposed to provide services. I mean, we're getting pretty close here with when they used to broadcast on the, right? And now we're talking about this. I wonder if there's a way that they they would provide funding because it's going to cost more money. You just said there was an eight dollar per. You know, that might be a way we could find out if we could get some money out of them or if we have a new contract coming up. Build that into that into that contract so that we could, right?
Find a way to fund. Those are all the like, all the meetings set up and 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 broadcast features are very nifty. And it would be great for the town to move towards a more professional broadcast of our meetings. I I agree, but we'll need some staffing and policies for that. The biggest feature that this offers us immediately, which is the one everybody's been using, is the uh summary of the transcript, which is done by the uh Microsoft language model, the, you know, artificial intelligence. And it's going in there and and analyzing what we're talking about and it's pulling out topics. And it's uh doing uh point in time markers in the video so that you can see when people speak, uh, who those people are uh and what they're talking about. And so in our last meeting, for example, when we talked extensively about how many dogs would fit under the canopy there or the arena, right? That came out as a topic. And that was, you know, in the middle of a one hour conversation. If that was something, you know, you wanted to go back and look at right now, you have to sit through the notes to figure that out or you have to watch YouTube and scroll back and forth. With this, uh, it's just a button. It says the topic of uh dogs under the arena. You click it, it flies to that section of the video. You can review it. It will also show you side by side the transcription as you can see right now, we're we're feeding the live transcription. It's, you know, reading my words directly. Afterwards, this transcription gets saved as a text file in our share points uh in in our OneDrive specifically. We'd like to move that so it's open into a SharePoint area. And that means it's also become searchable inside of our search, our office search right now so that you could search for the that fit under the arena words. And then those would show up in our SharePoint based on our transcript. We could go right then to the meeting video, which is stored in SharePoint and and look at it. And so the feature set is pretty extensive. Uh, it's pretty useful for staff like ours where we just don't have enough people to get everything out as quickly as we would like to. This, of course, still needs a human in the loop. This doesn't get rid of Flora's job. It just makes her job, it just makes her job way easier. Uh, because now she can compare what she's writing down right now with what the AI is summarizing. And then thirdly, with what the transcription has written out word for word. And so that gives us a lot of data to work with. It gives us the ability to present the information back to people who who like to read, to people who just need the summary. There's just a lot of goodness there. The uh the cost, the eight dollars per person, uh, we would not most likely license the entire staff. We would just license all of the meeting uh initiator, creators and and admins like that, those duos. There's usually two for each, you know, committee uh or and or the department heads, depending on how we move forward with meeting policies. Regardless, we're going to have to cancel this license on November twentieth, so it doesn't go into payment. So those features will end on that date. Uh, transcription will stick around now that that's on in our tenant. We'll keep that on permanently. Um, you will have to enable it manually at the beginning of every meeting. Automatic recording, which would enable automatic transcription is something I'd like us to do in the future. But again, that's like policy stuff.
The good news is we do have a bylaw
Yes.
that requires us to broadcast and record everything. So there is a policy in a sense in place, how it's implemented.
Right, we have to kind of put the implemented implementation details around the bylaws so that they made sense. But the transcript that's running to the right screen, that's what, that's our automatic transcription, is that what you're saying? So That's a feature we're already paying. We just
Why is, is it because Laura started the meeting and her name's appearing there?
Yes.
At what point would we actually see the actual name of the person? Will we keep our microphones on? Is that what we would do?
So I've been talking about this with professionals in the field. There's a lot of options for this. Um, the easiest option for a room like this would be to buy special devices or to mic individually everybody that were named that way. Though if we're all remote, if you go back and look at like the select meeting where we're all remote, uh, like the the review of of the warrant, that is attributed perfectly because we're all there. Take all that away, the AI in the feature is able to pull out mentions of your name regardless of whether or not you are the miked person on here. So when I say Michael Goddard in the meeting, uh, that AI is just going to pull out that I mentioned you and you'll you're able to go in there and see your own mentions.
I'm talking about the third party is reading a transcription. It looks like Laura did all the talking for the meeting.
Right, so Laura and I, Laura and I have been talking about that and, right. She has to essentially um ensure that those names get changed if we're going to use it as public attribution.
Those are the questions. From an open meeting law standpoint, has this type of software been approved for review? Because we had, we, the legislature had to approve that's using, doing this stuff virtually anyway, right? Well, not not us individually, but they
No, 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 but I mean, for open meeting, having, using like teams.
Oh, hybrid, a hybrid.
They they renewed it for a period of time.
But they didn't, they didn't, my understanding is they did not dictate which ones we could use. All they said was we could
No, no, but they had to allow us to do hybrid meetings. My question is, have they allowed uh AI transcription to be books and records, if you will?
No.
No.
So there is going to be a natural, or still converting everything.
Yeah, that's the human in the loop part where like in in order to enable like our meeting minutes to be standardized and look the same and sound and feel the same, oh, you know, week over week. Uh, I, yeah, a human needs to come in and take that transcription. The transcription is really more for the people who are in the meeting or needing it for reference uh or or people who are not.
Did I really say that?
That, did I really say that is very important, like that sort of that sort of thing now is can be reinforced with not just the transcription or the meeting notes, but now you'll see the marker in the video so that you can tie those together. And say, not only did I say that, but I I I
That's that's huge. It is actually, it'll tell you exactly where in the video to go to.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty neat and it it'll automatically create chapters and all that good stuff. And and it keeps all that processing inside of our tenant, so our data doesn't leave while it does that work. So like, for example, if we were relying on YouTube to do some sort of transcription analysis, like, we don't have any control over that. It just happens. It's out in the public space and whatever they decide is what they decide. Here, that data stays here inside and we have control over what we do with it, whether we delete it automatically after a period of time, whether we analyze it, whether we open it up to all the town staff. All those decisions stay with us as opposed to putting it out in the public space where anybody has access to it. So we we should put out a finished product, right? Which is that YouTube video and and hopefully a some sort of transcript or summary next.
So you're saying it's going to be, instead of just the YouTube video we put out now, there'll be a transcript with it with the markers in it, so.
Internally, yep, that's searchable via SharePoint. Um, and we can, you know, if we move all these out of our personal OneDrive spaces so that they don't delete when we leave um and put it into a public, you know, meeting space like a Teams channel, that that keeps it available for everybody in town to access and look at. And then we can talk about how long we keep our video along and and all that. So right now, like, for example, our videos be automatically after sixty days. Um, they don't have to. That's just how it's set up.
But in the meantime, it usually, I I I don't, I think it's Dan that's moving them over.
Yeah, so and Dan has a lot, Dan's, we've been talking to Dan a lot about this and and he's had a lot of feedback because he spends so much time doing this work across committees. And some of the biggest problems he has is like, he has to do remote IT and essentially like share that video. Can you share this speaking? Add me in here. If we could move all this into a more public space, then the people doing that IT work will have a lot less trouble.
Yeah, right now, whoever starts recording it saves into their personal OneDrive and then you have to share it with Dan.
So that's a separate issue and all this. I would like to take like a little working group aside to talk about policies and that would uh include more than just us because that's really about what happens in across committees. There's some very vocal committee members out there who would love to participate in that. So um I, that's something with policies. I'm going to try to form a little group to decide to talk about those meeting policies and then we'll bring them here and talk about them in the open and and see what we can move forward with. But that's sort of separate. That's just coming up as we are investigating this license. We're seeing the need for those types of policies.
So there's a cost for it.
Yes.
But the the uh the benefit is increased transparency, increased usability by the internal committees, people, if it's in the public space, by anyone who was viewing the the video. But there's also an efficiency
But there's also an efficiency gain here in terms of what people are doing just to maintain the current environment that people aren't aware of.
Yes, sir. That's fair.
So do you need any, any kind of a formal vote? Are you just gonna?
Formal vote. I do need to know how to proceed with it, like determining how many of those people get the license, how we, how we purchase that, how we get that on it. It's like, what's our technology budget look like? I mean, I've seen the line item, but I don't, to Jody's point, like, I don't know how much that we spent. What does that mean? Like, how do, I, we normally move forward with.
Plus, what is, well, we, we would normally deal with, deal with our vendor.
Well, and I've spent a lot of time with our vendor. Of course, I haven't enabled the features on my own. So I've been working with them, and I've, I just met with them last week. They're gonna put together an official Jeff from WorldCom's gonna put together an official quote for us. Cause he just gave me a, a guestimate based on the current licensing costs. There's a sale going on right now before the end of December. The price is gonna change any minute. But yeah, that, all that official process for how we move forward with the purchasing, I mean, I guess we could make a motion. I could make a motion to move forward with the working group. I don't know if that's needed, though.
No, not for that.
Okay. Um, but the.
We're not ready to about the purchase yet, you know, when, at the time.
And if I recall correctly, anyone who has that premium license who joins a meeting, the meeting.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. As soon as anybody with that license joins a meeting, it becomes premium.
Yeah, so we don't have a license for everyone. We just need to select.
Right, probably, probably need around.
Who all got that trial premium license?
So that was this, this board, Ellen, and Dan Byer, and, and Laura. And I think that's, I think that's about it. But I've been using these features and talking to the compound committee, Kyle Super, interested in being involved to talk about that. And, and I've been at the Board of Health meetings and doing summaries there as well. So, so committees are seeing the features.
Probably like.
Everybody loves it, right? Like, cause, you know, sometimes it's hard to remember what you said three hours ago. It, this is the, the easiest way to do that. And if you're a person who has like really bad ADD, like the transcription is perfect place to scroll back and read what just happened. Going forward, there are some features that Microsoft, actually, they, they have a conference that just started today that Microsoft has called Copilots, and you might hear those. Copilots are much more integrated into the Office Suite and allow you to use sort of real time language to ask it questions. So I have a financial sheet in front of me, and I can just say, tell me what this is really about. That, those types of things I'd like to talk about maybe next year, once they're more refined. And we've got some AI experience under our belt, but like the future is really hitting us fast for how all sorts of people in all sorts of industries utilize these tools to make their lives easier, so.
Like search warrants for police. Or summaries for courts.
Right, or like license plate identification or facial recognition, which is always in the courts at the moment. But that is all being handled by these models. And so the more that we can train our systems on how we do work, the earlier we can get our staff to use these tools and be familiar with what they do and don't do, the, the better off we'll be long term. At least, this isn't like flash in the pan stuff. This is stuff that's been twenty years coming. And so it's here, it's not going away. So the, the, the more technological we can get, the safer we can be about that technology. It's, it's hard. It's like a, you know, it's the snake eating its tail. You don't want to go too hard into this stuff because it can get really overwhelming. But I think a small feature like this is a big value add and helps push us towards the policies it'll make for better meetings.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Town administrative report. The auditor, we're expecting that the auditor is gonna be coming in next week. The annual audit is a generally requirement, because we get, you know, certain funds, and we want to make sure that everything is you know, proper and, and it, it's a, it's an annual thing that every town does.
And, and can I just ask to make sure that when the audit is done, that the, the management letter?
Okay.
Right, that that letter, ask them to specifically mention anything from the previous years that wasn't addressed? To go back five years, anything that wasn't addressed, make sure it's a managerial, please make sure that each one of the five members of this board sees that management letter.
Yeah, every time I've gotten a management letter and the recommendations, I've made sure the board got it. And I made sure that each of the individual items or the findings were addressed in some capacity, either written in what we're going to do or what we're doing now.
How long does the audit take?
I'm sorry?
How long does the audit take?
Two days. It's gonna fit it in, basically. He, he had a job and he thinks it's gonna not happen. So we said, you know, he, he works out of Hope Dale, nice guy. He actually dropped in out of the blue. He introduced himself and told me.
I'm here to audit you. And then so we can like, hey, expect a report then like within a month like that, or is it like a long tale?
Well, they work, they work, the, the auditing part, what they do, they, they do what they call sampling. They take certain documents and at random. So, and then they look at them to make sure that they're done correctly and that they're in accordance with accounting standards and.
And then the very long just, yeah, there's a very long disclaimer about how the sampling, how the, you know, they can't draw all the conclusions, you know? I mean, you know.
It's on site two to three days, but it's, the audit process takes weeks between the coordination of the Treasury Collectors Office, the Clerk's Office. So basically, all those components get put together. We, they come on site to physically go through some of our files and make sure they have all the P P. And then we'll get, we should do an audit in November. I love doing, you know, where Mr. Tels wait till January, February. I'm like, you're out of your mind. Do it now, get it done. And we have our management letter usually by January, which is fantastic because there's lots of here and reporting, and then compliance reporting has to be done. So we usually have that. You don't have to say, I'll get it to you. It's just done.
Actually, the management letter comes in a draft form first, so we get to look at it and say, no, that's not right, or we, we actually get. Children's financial controls.
An example of something would be, oh, investment returns didn't yield, oh, my tenor, did you, could you forget the market? You know what I mean? Like, don't call out a thing that wasn't in your control.
My biggest issue is that we still, after several years, don't have financial policies and procedures that this board has voted on and accepted. And one of the areas is when it comes to reimbursement, exactly what, what's reimbursable and what isn't. And also what documentation you need. I mean, clearly.
Employee expenses.
Yes. And that all needs to be documented, and it should be mentioned in the letter again, because it hasn't been done. It was mentioned before. Yeah, but it was not meant, but it has not been done. It was not mentioned, and it was not brought to the attention of the board. And it needs to be, it needs to be addressed. So I just want to make sure that's out there, so.
Water filtration Friday, they're gonna do the installation. It's not as simple.
You can't just show up and drink all the water.
They're, we're gonna have to have the water sampled and, and it's gonna have to be approved by D E P. So there may be a little bit of a time lag, but it's happening, at least finally.
Doesn't matter, it's happening.
The power was transferred off of the poles to the other ground. Little bit of excitement there. We, they didn't, there, there was something about it in the, in Laura's office, this big panel, and something wasn't pushed down properly. And all, half of the lights were, half more flickering. We were concerned it was gonna surge. They came back, they fixed it, and everything's okay. Although there were flickering in the room downstairs tonight when we had a meeting. Library, I've instructed the building inspector to go out, take a look at the library situation in terms of directory, the shed and the garage. And conducted inspection and give us some kind of report back in terms of what we need to do. Then we did get a thing from our council saying that they were, we should probably issue a cease and desist if that was the case. Once again, it's gonna be a board decision. I don't have any problem writing the cease and, so. Okay, cease and desist letter. I've done those in the past. I just sent it by council before I sent it out. Yeah, it was delivered by the police.
I, I think the important point is, three or so years ago, it was a study that was done that rec, that made different recommendations about the, the old church rectory, the attached garage and the shed behind it. And I talked, I went back and forth with the building inspector today, and I wanted to look at that and see if, you know, things have further deteriorated with the situation is, because, you know, we may need to, we talked about, about priorities, capital expenses, we may need to take those buildings down rather than, it might be the most cost effective thing.
Same thing with Crask. We got a, a report in today, I guess, from the building inspector. Basically giving us an overview of what he did on his inspection in October. There is, I would probably recommend to the board at some point that we meet an executive session to discuss some of the things that he, he met with the.
Life of stakeholder.
Yeah, life stakeholder, and there's some potential there that we should probably talk about as a board and discuss in executive session to see how that all works, so. A department head meeting next month was originally going to be a department head meeting with the holiday theme. But thanks, John, tonight he came and he said we should probably make it a, a holiday party of sorts. So we're gonna probably look at that, have all the staff in it, and, and make it a holiday theme party for everybody to participate in. It won't be as formal as our department.
Well, you know, in, in previous years, we actually had taken, we actually did kind of a celebration and a thank you for everyone who was any kind of a volunteer employee or anything else. We actually went to Galliford's. And those that, and, and in years before that, we would have things at the senior center, although there's not enough room for that.
I was thinking. I'll send a list out and Google Sheets and what do, what can you bring and.
Well, I guess the, the question is, while we're, we're talking about that subject, what do we think about, about doing some kind of a holiday celebration?
I think it's a great idea. Where do we get money for that?
We have, we have money in a, in that same account still for the town celebration.
Oh, right.
Well, if not, there's still, there's, there, there's monies in our, in the select board. There's, there's monies available, but can you look into, reach out to Galliford to see if they have space available?
Okay, I was thinking more of an informal.
Well, I think that, well, I think we're talking about two different things. One of them for the, for the staff.
Yeah.
All right, okay. On the bigger community of all the boards and committees.
Sure.
I'd like to do that again. We, we were gonna do it, and it get, kind of fell through last year, but. Yeah, we should do it.
Collective bargaining has started, police and fire. I'm not involved in that. They request that I not be part of that, which I originally planned on doing.
Yeah, the first step is just, it's just for ground rules. It's council, council, and then, right, that's it. But you will be involved in eventually, or you're. What I mean is the town administrator position.
Yes, no, I would.
At this point, right.
Wow. The other you.
That's about it. That's all I got. Go ahead next week.
Enjoy.
Yeah, yeah.
Enjoy. Right. I, meeting, next meeting is the twenty ninth is our, is our, right, workshop. And hopefully we'll have this television and the camera set up so we can actually do it downstairs right below us. But at that point, you just need a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.